That's okay.
Sorry, I totally forgot about our buttons here. Tim Johnson, Chair of the Major Ex citizen Oversight Committee, and I call this regular meeting to order. We are conducting this meeting in person. Wonderful to see everyone, and it's also being recorded. And the agenda for the meeting is on the city's website at www.santa ana dot O R G. Members of the public will have the opportunity to address the major ex citizen oversight committee regarding agenda and also non-agenda items during the public comment section of the meeting. And we are going to start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, so stand and wherever you are, and we will, there we go, we're in the corner. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and can we go ahead and call the roll, please?
Member two? Here. Two?
Oh, sorry, number two.
No, two, you're.
Oh, I'm still sorry.
That's okay. I thought maybe I mispronounced it.
Don't even recognize my own name.
My apology.
Okay.
Wow, that was funny. Michael Chu, present.
Thank you. Member Lewis?
Present.
Member Lugo?
Present.
Member Perez?
Present.
Chair Johnson?
I'm here also.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. And then at this time, this would be where anyone from the public can comment on agenda and non-agenda items. See after we have anyone either in person or online, but are we, are we still doing online comments?
We are, well, we're, we're allowing them to join online, but we do not have anything.
Excellent, but we are, if they want to make comments online, they're still able to?
They can raise their hand.
Excellent, all right, thank you. So then now we're going on to our agenda items, our, our next item is number, number one on the agenda, which is the consent calendar, which consists of approval of minutes from the September thirteenth meeting. Do any members want to pull that or have any edits? And if not, we'll all entertain a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, excellent, thank you both, and unless there's any other comments, let's go ahead and call the vote, please.
Member two?
Approve.
Member Lewis?
Aye.
Member Lugo?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
We have a quorum, or we have approved.
All right, excellent, perfect.
Motion approved.
Excellent, so our next agenda item is number two, which is the election of a vice chair to this, to this board. And I am going to make a motion to nominate member Lugo as our vice chair.
I'll second.
Thank you, would anyone else like to make any comments? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Member two?
Yes, aye.
Member Lewis?
Aye.
Member Lugo?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Chair Johnson?
That's a yes for me also.
Motion approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the vote of confidence, Chair Johnson, I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate you being here, I think from day one, right?
I have been, I've been here from day one, but I did miss the last two meetings for the first time since day one, and I feel bad about that, I did have an opportunity to watch the majority of September's meeting, so I'm looking forward to catching up and, you know, being very present and.
Excellent, I appreciate it. And so number three is our agreed upon procedure report from our independent CPA audit firm, C L A.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Daphne Munoz, here to present the, our results of our examination of the assertion on measure X for the year ended June thirty twenty twenty three. Next slide, please. Oh, okay. Next slide. So just a brief introduction of who we are and our scope of our services, so we are C L A, and I am a principal at, at C L A, and we are engaged, this engagement is serviced from, from Irvine, we are a national firm, wow, eighth, currently eighth in the United States, and we also do the financial statement audit for the city of Santa Ana for year end of June thirty twenty twenty three. Our, the scope of our engagement is to, to examine the management's assertions regarding the compliance with measure X, and we've agreed, as part of that, we agree the revenues and uses and expenditures identified by management to source documents. Next slide, please. So for the year in the June thirty twenty twenty three, total measure X revenues as detailed in the schedule and the report is eighty six point eight million, and total uses and expenditures as detailed in Schedule seventy one point six, and that leave about fifteen million transferred to the general fund reserves. Next slide. So our examination does not provide a legal determination on the city's compliance. We did examine the management assertion that the accompanying the schedule of measure X revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year June thirty twenty twenty three is accurate, and that they complied with the requirements of measure X ballot language. So in our opinion, the management's assertion, the, that accompanied the schedule for the fiscal year end of June thirty twenty twenty three are, is accurate, and that the city's use of expenditures of measure X complied with the requirements of measure X ballot languages, and is fairly misstated in all material respects. And really, that, that is my, my presentation is very brief, we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have in the report.
Excellent, and so we are going to, we'll do a, just a walk around, if anyone has any questions. Actually, for this one, why don't we, if you have a question, go ahead and just raise your hand or turn your mic on, and let's just go ahead and ask instead of doing a, a walkthrough, just because I imagine we may have some limited questions, so anyone have any questions for, for C L A? No, okay, well, very good, I appreciate it. This is from day one, this is one of the issues, the problems that I've had with, I think our group is, or about this ballot language, because I think it'd be very difficult to not have an opinion that you're, the results that you have, just because the ballot language is so, so broad. But you do very important work, and so I appreciate, appreciate the format, and I think we came up, what, three years ago with, with this format? So I think it, it serves the best purpose that it can, so, but, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I don't think, we don't have to vote or approve or anything, right, we're just receiving, so, all right, excellent. And so then on to number four, which is our sales tax consultant with, for the city, and so let's go ahead.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's, my name's Fran Manci, it's a pleasure to be with you in person for the first time in many years, and I had, personally, I just want to share that I've been around measure X from the inception, having worked on the campaign in terms of drafting ballot language, and I'm glad to hear that we're meeting the standards from a fiscal perspective, that was, it was complicated process to put the language together. So just with that, I have a personal tie to this measure in terms of the success, because of the city's good work, so it's great to be here. If we go to the next slide, please, that'd be great, just wanted to kind of do a little recap from a broader perspective, looking at the state level. And, you know, in terms of taxable sales, there's been a lot of change going up, this is going to be the first year where we're not, we're showing a slight decline and a flattening, we've always come in here with tremendous reports, as you can see back in twenty eighteen, the change in sales was up four point eight percent statewide, six point five, then during twenty twenty, it dropped down seven point three, that's when the pandemic, of course, started, then in twenty one, we started to see a big rise of statewide is up twenty six percent, there's a lot of stimulus money, CARES Act money and things that were infused into the economy that really helped, and then we started to flatten out in twenty twenty two. The thing I think is of most note is, for the first three quarters of this current year, we're down one point one percent, and you're going to see that across the state, things are flat, we're kind of reflective here, nothing that's just overly concerning, yet we're in a time where things are going in that direction. I think the big bright spots currently are restaurant sales are really up, and it's not just because more people are going out, more people are going out, but the cost of going out to dinners and restaurant entertaining is high. It's, it's not more consumption, it's just higher prices at restaurants, that's really driving it, and of course, e-commerce is up, up, up. Now it's starting to level off, but over the last few years, it's really been a bright spot. Used car sales are down statewide, and a lot of that has to do with, more and more of us are not buying cars, so I'm not selling my car to Kat, and then she's reporting the tax, we're seeing more people turning them into a CarMax, or using Broom or some of these other companies, so we're seeing that consolidated into businesses, less person-to-person type of transactions in terms of used car sales, that's also changing because inventories of new cars are starting to come back up. And so that's really good in terms of measure X, because under measure X, if someone buys a car in the city of Santa Ana, but they may, you know, they live here and they buy a car, I should say, in Gardena or something like that, you're getting tax revenue because it's based on where the product is delivered. You also get the benefit if, if someone buys a car in Santa Ana who lives here, but if someone goes outside the city to purchase, it changes it, and I'll show a slide on that in just a minute. Building materials wholesale and retail are starting to come down, I think we're all tired of doing home improvement projects that we all did during the pandemic. Looking around the room, I can see many of you, we're done, Kat's done, I'm done, we're all done with that. We're also seeing service station prices are up and down, as you all know, gas prices are starting to trick down. The way our sales tax laws in California driven, are derived, gas prices are a huge part of it, we have a very narrow tax base in the state, we're really relying on car sales, gas, gasoline sales and general retail, so we're starting to see some shifts there as we go forward. Then drugstores is the overall category where cannabis sales are statewide, those have become, calmed down, I think there's some challenges around pricing and the illicit market is really having an impact on legitimate legal cannabis sales in jurisdictions like yours that has them. Now, let's maybe go to the next slide, please. This is not going to go in too deep here, but this kind of gives you a sense of consumer price index, you can see above the line for going all the way back to January of twenty twenty one, we're continually seeing upward movement. But in March of this year, we started to see numbers go the other direction, so down three point five, and then the most recent, these are rolling twelve month periods, just to give you a sense, so we're dropping down about four point five percent over the last several months, so that's kind of indicative of the economy, we'll look at some of those numbers in a moment, but we think it's going to stay flat like this through the rest of this year, and certainly through the first two quarters of twenty twenty four. So when we get to the forecast, you'll see a little more, it's a bit more conservative, if we can go to the next one, please. So this is just a look at California sales tax by region, and we use this one previously, but I think it's important to give you a dynamic, and you'll see the city of Santa Ana, the gray bar going across. You know, this goes back to the summer rally of twenty twenty two, three, you guys were up fifteen point three percent, then COVID came in and it kind of flattened out a little bit, then we started getting some of the federal stimulus money, it jumped up a whopping forty four percent, and then next year thirty two percent. As you go out to the right, you can see it started to level out, we also started seeing interest rates ticking up, so for example, you see it up five percent in the, in the twenty twenty three first quarter, then five point five in the second quarter, and again, third quarter, so interest rates have started to have an impact, but the things that are most interesting is that you're down seven point one percent in this, in the second quarter, and now another two point seven percent in the third quarter of this current calendar year, so that's the tapping off, we're starting to see the economy slow, and it's reflected in the sales tax numbers. However, if you go to the next slide, when you look at the total dollars for the fiscal year, you'll see that generated eighty six point eight million dollars for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. For the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, we were at eighty six million, so it's flat, but you're still up eight hundred thousand from the previous fiscal year, so you're not going down, we're not expecting to see a major dive, but it's leveled off, but you're still a little bit up from the previous fiscal year. Currently, there's four hundred and ninety district tax levied in California, when we met last year, there's four hundred and fifty. A lot of jurisdictions are going out to election in twenty twenty four to pass sales tax measures, there's some political issues out there, you may have heard of the Business Roundtable Measure, and there's A C A was thirteen, which is trying to balance that out, there'll be on the battle in the ballot in November. Doesn't have an impact in your current measure, but it could potentially impact, depending on how the vote goes, your ability to extend your measure or do another sales tax measure or T O T measure, whatever it might be, so that's going to be a very hot topic in November, one to watch for sure. Your measure X is administered by the C D T F A, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, they charge five percent of your revenues as an administrative fee. They also do that on your regular Bradley Burns tax as well. So I mentioned earlier that this is based on where the product is delivered, if we go to the next slide, sort of a refresher of how the tax is delivered to you, Bradley Burns is your traditional one percent tax, that's based on where a product is purchased, the place of origin. Whereas measure X is again is based on destination, so as I used the example before, if you purchase a vehicle in Santa Ana, it's purchased by a non-resident, you get Bradley Burns tax, but you do not receive measure X tax. But if a resident of Santa Ana buys a car, as I mentioned before, in Gardena, you'll get tax on that under measure X, but not under Bradley Burns. So it's done differently, not to make it confusing, but just to give you that sense that it's done a little differently. And then the biggest one, though, that's most important, you, anybody who purchases online, you get all that tax here in Santa Ana, if it's purchased by a resident or a business located here. Whereas under Bradley Burns, it's done under a formulaic, so you only get a small fraction, so that's really what's driving your, your continued revenue under measure X. And then business, retail, restaurants, things like that, if it's based here in the city, you're getting the revenue under both, both measures. So if we can go to the next one, let's take a look at the performance a little bit. These are quarter over quarter comparisons. The first one is general retail, which is the, I guess, the burgundy color, so you're down three point eight percent when you compare the second quarter of twenty twenty three to the second quarter of twenty twenty one, so starting to decline a little bit, year over year, it's down about four point seven percent. However, food products are up quarter over quarter, three point nine percent, so food products includes restaurants, entertainment, catering, and other, other things of that type, so you're still doing very well, you have a large, good business base here of restaurants and other food products that are tax generating, so that's great. Transportation is the category that includes car sales as well as gas sales. So again, that really rises and falls with the price per gallon, so you'll see you're down about eight point five percent. However, when you look at the entire year, it's still up two point two percent. So construction, this would be wholes, building materials wholesale, retail, you can see that's down a little bit. Again, what I, it's back to what I referred to earlier, people are kind of done with home improvement products, but you're still selling a lot of hope, building materials wholesale, that's still going strong, whereas retail sales are flattening out, so that's mostly places like Home Depot, Lowe's, or building supply places like that. And then business to business is a broad category, it's down about nine point three percent. So we go to the next one, please. This gives you a look at percent change over the same quarter of the prior year, this is cash basis, but I'm just going to kind of go down to the, the bullets, I think that's the most significant point. We talked about restaurants, they continue to go up, but it's not because of increased volumes, because of increased prices, they're paying higher goods, just like all of us for food and the liquor and the things they serve in their, in the restaurants, and I think we all know about that, as we shop in, in stores, we're paying a lot more for products. E-commerce, people are starting to go back to brick and mortar, I think that's important, I think a lot of us, when we go out to brick and mortar, we're going out to entertainment things like Top Golf or movie theaters that are selling food and drink where you can have a meal, those things are really doing extremely well. People want experience in all new retail throughout the state, it's all about experiential, it's not necessarily a new Macy's or a new Bloomingdale's. People want something that's experiential, and I think that's, that's really driving retail right now. Talked about auto sales prices, you know, prices are up twenty, we're up twenty three, two percent in twenty one, eight point six percent in twenty two, and year to date, they flattened out again, only up about point nine percent, so we're seeing interest rates definitely having an impact on car sales. Yeah, we talked about building materials and service stations, I think the last bullet is, is really significant, cannabis sales across the state are down, it's down here, but it's down everywhere. You can see that in twenty twenty three, it's down about ten percent, and prices are expected to decline, we're seeing a consolidation in the cannabis space. Companies are, bigger companies are buying up the dispensaries, a lot of them are folding because the illicit market is so rampant, and I'm sure you're, you're fully aware in, in public safety about the impacts of the illicit markets in, in the area, and again, that's statewide. So if we could go to the next one, this is a good graphic, just to show the craziness of gas prices, as you can see, there's been a lot of spikes, right now, we're starting to see a bit of a a decline in the third quarter, it was down five point eight percent, but up slightly in the fourth, uh, fourth quarter, but we expect this to continue, I do want to just take sidebar on gas prices, I think it's a very interesting thing to watch. We're really concerned about gas consumption over the long term, because we're seeing such a shift to electric vehicles from, from gas consuming vehicles, I mean, it's great for the environment, but we're starting to see across the state, new car sales are twenty three percent of the car sales now are electric, and the year before was sixteen, so we're, it's really good to see the car sales turning electric, but we're concerned about the effects on gas consumption in turn from a tax perspective, and so that's something to be looking forward to, and we're factoring that into our long-term forecasts. So it's a good thing from a consumption point of view, a bad thing from a tax perspect, perspective. If we go to the next one. So we're hearing a lot about inflation, I think we all feel it when we go to the grocery store, where we feel it when we buy taxable or non-taxable items. As you can see, the, the most recent changes are really in all categories overall, and the red is up three point two percent. But the biggest area where we're feeling it is in food, the challenge with food in tax, most of the tax, food products are not taxable unless they're pre-cooked or prepared at a store. They're up about three point two, three point three percent, and we talked about gas, we're starting to see that come down. And then commodities and other services are up four percent, so that's really the, the big categories currently right now are everything but energy in terms of inflation. So let's talk about the, the next slide, if we could, about net sales for the city. This graph goes back to the third quarter of twenty twenty, we're generating non-adjusted about sixty four million when this first started, and you can see it's steadily grown. We're now up to eighty six point two million dollars per year for the city, the red line is adjusted for inflation, so it's constant twenty twelve dollars. But you can see a nice rise with just a slight little dip, but we're not, again, in your city, it's done extremely well, we don't see a lot of jagged numbers, we see that in others that don't have a balanced business space that you have, so a solid number there. And if we go to the next one, it's just a per capita chart, you can see the different categories, regional retail is up two hundred, eighty one dollars, you can see the food products is up to fifty one, transportation sixty five, construction, et cetera, so you know, you've grown in the last year from two hundred and eighty per capita to two ninety one, so that's a steady, nice number in, in this environment, and the next chart is just the same, except adjusted for inflation, just so you have both, if you go to the next one. So you can see that the numbers run the same. The next slide I'd like to show just looks at you comparing Santa Ana to some other areas around here, some of the transit districts and others. You'll see it to the far right in the gray, and I referred to it earlier, down about seven point one percent for the second quarter of twenty twenty three, and two point seven percent decline in the third quarter, we expect that number to continue for another three quarters, the same nominal declines, but nothing, again, dramatic, and then we'll start to flatten out and grow back up in the second half of twenty twenty four in our view. So if we go to the next slide, we just list some of the assumptions that we put together for the forecast. You know, as I mentioned, we're expecting below historic averages for the third and fourth quarters. A lot of this is really doing with climate change, the recession that we've talked about, and the political and, and political disruptions are really hard to predict, we're going into election year, you know, a very divided country, a very divided state in terms of views, that starts to have an impact on people's consumption and buying habits, do we feel that inflation is there or is it not, is the economy good or bad? It does have an impact on how people consume and spend money. Geopolitically, obviously, it's unstable, so those are things we're looking at. On the positive side, we see unemployment continues to be low, and labor, labor markets are really tight, especially for skilled jobs, there are a lot of openings and potential jobs that are have, people are having a hard time filling. So, you know, and then we list some of the other things on the next slide. So I see we have the forecast up, I think, why don't we take a look at that, I'm sorry, went right by it, no worries, there it is. These are the numbers that we're, we're forecasting for twenty twenty three and twenty two. It is down a little bit from last year, when we looked at twenty twenty three, we're, we're estimating a little bit over eighty seven million, we're down to eighty six million, eight fifty for twenty two, twenty three. We've had to adjust back because of the recessions and the gas prices and the things we talked about, so the forecast has gotten a little bit more conservative for twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four, so you can see it's down about one point one percent. However, when we get to twenty four, twenty five, we start to grow back out, up about three point one percent, and then two point eight, two point six, and we get very conservative in the years, but we're not expecting any major recessionary activity, just this leveling out into the future, so. If we could just go to the next one, I'm not going to touch on it too much, but this one, I think, is, is, oh, I'm sorry, one more, please. This is some of the assumptions that we looked at, we also look at gross domestic product, core, US core P C E inflation and things like that, as we come to the forecast, and if we go to the last slide, it'll kind of bring it home and happy to answer questions. So again, slow growth is forecasted, especially in the next year. You know, the cost of services is really a big impact that we're not feeling on your revenues here, so a lot of things, people are spending money on healthcare, education, senior care, those are untaxable things that are taking discretionary money that to take care of those very important things, but leaves less money perhaps for taxable consumption and things that may not be as needed. But those that do generate tax, so we're seeing that rise, commodities are mainly taxable, we're seeing that change, again, leaving less money for other things, so relative prices, gas, diesel, jet fuel have a big impact, and I think that's probably the thing where most we can really control the most is the impact of gas sales. The last thing I wanted to talk about is, the League of California Cities is spending a lot of time this past year and going into next year, looking at sales tax reform, we have a very antiquated tax system, we have the three stools that I talked about. Should we perhaps broaden our sales tax base, perhaps even lower the rates to, to make it more volatile, or less volatile, more stable? Those are big conversations that city management groups are working on and others. What can we do to bring our codes up to speed, and so we're not so reliant, you know, riding the wave up and down as the economy goes up and down. Those things take a lot of work and effort, but that's, those are definitely big topics you'll be hearing a lot about in the coming year. So I think I'll stop there and happy to answer questions, and I hope this is helpful.
Excellent, okay, so we're going to do a walk around, and so we can ask questions, and I'm going to have some questions for sure. But I'm going to start with the number two. Do you have questions?
I don't have any questions at this time, but I might have some questions.
Perfect, thank you, and member Lewis?
No questions at this time.
Perfect, thank you, member Perez?
Um, for um, the gas consumption that you mentioned, the push of electric cars and the consequences of that, you mentioned it being factored in, can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
No, absolutely, and I think it's an important area, we just touched on briefly, so I, we don't really see huge impacts over the next two to three years, but it, as you go out five years and ten years, we've done some analysis, it's good, it's going to be very dramatic, so we have some time to, to adjust. The interesting thing is, when you, you use electricity to charge up your car, yet your city does have a utility user taxes, so it can generate some tax there, but it doesn't make up for the potential loss revenue as we go there, the other thing is, in twenty thirty, the state has a mandate to get to zero. the state has a mandate to get to zero emission vehicles. Whether we get there or not is a different conversation, but that's something that has to be factored in. So that's why the conversation becomes more relevant. Do we broaden the tax base or find other ways to make it more balanced to compensate for that? The hard part is, you know, we all want clean air and good environments. That's so important for us and all our children. Um, the other side is, how do we make up that revenue that could potentially go away? So what we're doing is we're factoring out a gradual, to answer your question, we're taking a gradual decline in gas sales over as we look into the five and six year. So for next year, it's down maybe a couple percentage points, but as we look out to the the far end of our forecast, we're taking it down a larger, larger amount. And we're gonna track each year how much it goes down to factor that down. So uh, very conservative figures on gas, but the hardest part is one day it's up, one day it's down. It's it's really a hard one to forecast, so we're being extremely conservative and factoring in small amounts. I hope that helps answer the question.
It does. That would be all. Thank you.
Great. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take prerogative and kind of follow up with with a couple of questions if that's if that's okay. The gas tax, that's not a per gallon, like a set per gallon. It's just like the regular sales taxes.
That's a great question, Chair. That's so, this is simply one percent or one point five percent in your case of whatever consumption there is. So if someone fills their tank up here in Santa Ana, um, there's a one point five percent sales tax on that. However, there is a gas tax that's separate that the state administers, and that's factored into your gallon, price per gallon. So generally, that's why we're at least a dollar a gallon more than other states. That's that set gas tax.
Perfect. Um, and then, so you you have taken into account like the projections of the of the use of the decline in in gasoline for as we try to strive towards mandates of electric vehicles. And so that 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 will be a a larger impact in say like ten years than it will be in two years.
Right. And I think it's prudent to put that into our into the conversation as we look forward. So if there's any changes, we understand why. Uh, frankly, that's why our forecast is a little bit more conservative for this twenty-three, twenty-four year, for example, from when we met last year. We've reduced it down slightly, so it's that's why we're down a little bit in the current forecast going forward.
And is and is that a kind of a customized to Santa Ana? I feel like Santa Ana is a little uh, may- maybe uh, like when I drive through other cities, I see maybe more electric vehicles uh, like by my office in Irvine than I do by my house here in in Santa Ana.
That's a great question.
And so is that, is it kind of customized to the to the to the locale, or do you apply that across all of your clients?
No, I think that that's a great question, because when we do our forecasts, we do have access to the confidential data that the city provides, and we have confidentiality agreements in place with the state. So we take it the other way. We go from the ground up, so we very go very granular. We build it based on what we see in each particular jurisdiction. So in your case, you're right, there's more electric vehicles perhaps in different jurisdictions, and that's factored in. And we also look at every gas station, so we know how much they're generating, and we can see the revenue rises and falls. So it's custom tailored to your city, which is, I think, important.
Perfect. Great. And and this might be for Director Downs. So you mentioned that the U T T, the utility user, or I guess u- utility user tax. Is that a um, a revenue generator, or is that a pass-through of, I forget, I know that you probably have a technical term for, you know, when essentially the tax is just covering the cost of delivery of the service? Um, or is it an actual generation of revenue?
It's a revenue generator for the city. Yeah.
Excellent. All right, perfect. Those are my my follow-up questions on the 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 vehicle stuff. Uh, Vice Chair Lugo?
I was following up on that same uh, logic. I was, I was very curious how hybrid cars are categorized.
So hybrid, great question. So hybrid cars in terms of new car sales are in the bucket with new cars. So with hybrid sales.
Um, I apologize, uh, in regards to gas sales tax.
Okay, so whatever, a great question. So whatever gas they can, they purchase, it's no different than another car. So they may purchase less gas because they're hybrid, but whenever they purchase gas, it's it's factored based on what sale that X Y Z station here in Santa Ana.
So the forecast, is the forecast any different than a normal consuming vehicle versus
No.
one that's electric?
No, I see.
It's the same.
It's the same. It's based on, we look at it based on total gallons sold at a particular station and the revenue generates. But that's an important part of the question. As we have all these new electric vehicles coming out, how many will be hybrid over time? Will those start to phase down or not? That's that's gonna be an interesting thing to see.
Yeah, my understanding is that consumers are starting to look at hybrids in a different light now.
I think it's a good transition from all gas consumption to electric, because, you know, also production companies, Teslas and places like that, but GM and others are trying to ramp up in electric sales. They need time to do it, so hybrids give some sort of transition.
Got it.
As I understand it.
Um, is this a good time to go over a couple of the questions?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Fire away.
First of all, um, good presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mancilla. Um, I'm really, if you don't mind, give me, give us a two-minute understanding of what the Business Roundtable is. I'm not familiar with it.
I'd be happy to.
And you mentioned how it affects, it may affect our revenue moving forward of what they're doing now.
Be happy to. The Business Roundtable has a measure, it's called the Taxpayer Accountability Act. It'll be on the ballot in November. Basically, what they want to do is make it more difficult in my, in my humble opinion, for local governments to pass a special tax measure, so that they don't, they want to make them generally a two-thirds measure, not a fifty percent measure, more restrictions around what can be passed and the verbiage. It's it's, you know, it's more onerous to a city to pass a measure. It's the simple version of it. You know, I'm sure.
Got it.
Cat, why?
Oh, yeah.
I know, I know, Cat's gonna get going on this.
No, I could go all night, but I won't. Um, and isn't it true that this uh, measure would also cause uh, require voter approval to raise our fees?
It's right.
So right now, our fees are per for providing a specific service to a specific person. So you come in for a permit, I'm gonna charge you a fee. We base those fees on our cost to provide the service. And per state law, we can't exceed the cost of providing service. Okay. And um, so, uh, where was I? Oh, anyways, um, so what we do is we calculate our fees based on the cost of service, and then the city council can approve them to impose that for that permit, it's gonna cost you a hundred dollars because we've calculated that it costs us a hundred dollars to provide you with that very specific service.
Makes sense.
This, this measure would actually require voter approval for increases in fees. So it's um, from a standpoint of of local finance, local government finance, it it's a very spooky measure because it would make it very, very, very difficult for us to raise the revenue necessary to provide services to uh, the public. And and that's really what it comes down to in that uh, you know, how how do you explain, how do our council members explain to the public that maybe we had to reduce the number of people out doing maintenance in the right of way? Because, you know, we don't have, we we can't raise revenue. And so our revenues are decreasing and and yet our costs are increasing for providing this maintenance service. And then you have liability issues and everything else. So if we don't maintain our streets, now how many people are gonna start suing us because? So I mean, it's just, it it snowballs. It's a very, very big deal. Um, this is the big bad boogeyman for local government, in my opinion.
I understand. Thank you.
And this is gonna be, there's another measure that's trying to counterbalance it, being sponsored by the Cal- League of California Cities and support with a lot of the union groups that's gonna try to mitigate this measure from going forward. So there'll be two competing measures in November. Um, so that'd be interesting. They think this will be the most expensive statewide ballot battle in state history.
Thank you for that insight.
I'm I'm gonna kind of ask a follow-up uh, on that. So especially, or so Cat, are you gonna, are you anticipating seeing some like creative workarounds in anticipation of 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 a possible uh, November uh, change to to that? Like, I mean, are you, like, for example, um, is council able to say, oh, as long as it's uh, under two percent, it's an automatic increase? Or that's just, you know, by by ordinance? Um, or does instead of it going to a voter, or instead of even coming back to council if it doesn't? But I mean, is there, like, are, is those types of things, or is it?
My understanding is that our hands will be very tied.
Wow, okay. So then it will just be like a consent calendar every year on ballot measures for every city then? I mean, not a, I mean, obviously, it won't be consent, but it'll be, I mean, essentially, every city will be forced to have almost every year on a ballot for increases on things then, is that?
And and I mean, you, if you play this out, you know, if voter sentiment is just generally negative for whatever reason, maybe something that's completely out of the control of local government. Maybe they, maybe voters just don't feel good about what's happening at the national level or the international level. And so they go to the polls angry, and what do they do? They vote no.
Well, well, good insight. I I don't think, I feel like a lot of times I I have pretty good pulse on some of those things, but I have, this is one of those things that I um, learning about right now. So thank you for for that information.
Last question for me, Mr. Mancilla. Um, in your forecasted years, at the end, you showed a twenty twenty-nine uh, twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty forecast. I believe in twenty twenty-nine, we have a portion of the sunset of this measure. Was that factored into that number?
That's good question. Um, I don't think it was, because this is calc- you're right, that's when it does sunset. That's a full count. That's got a full year there, so that's a good point. That's good catch. So timing, depending on the timing, or if it's, you know, theoretically, we hear, when our guys are doing it, they're assuming it would be renewed at that rate. But the other thing we have to factor in is you're uh, you go to one percent down there too.
It's a, yeah, it's a happy point that it goes down, right?
Hmm, yeah. So I think those far years, I I I think we we did not adjust down to one percent.
Thank you.
So that's a great catch, and we'll we'll adjust that for the future.
Thanks.
All right, excellent. Great questions. Um, so I have, I have a couple of questions, um, in addition to what I've already tagged along there. Um, so you you mentioned the kind of trend is that other cities and districts are also generate, uh, you know, doing the same type of uh, dis- district taxes or or local city taxes. Are you, have you been able, are you able to quantify like when a, like, when a neighboring city increases? You know, there's what that has an impact on? You know, is there a flight to the cities that keep it low? And I'm thinking even, for example, I think Westminster is gonna have on on their ballot major, which might bring bring them to maybe our same level. I forget where they're at compared to us, um, but they're, I think, gonna put on the ballot and increase. Like, would that have, like, and that's a small amount, but like, as we start to see more and more of that happening, does that, uh, would that positively impact a city like Santa Ana that maybe had some of that flight initially? Um, to where if other cities start increasing, does that, you know, does some of it matriculate back into our city?
That's a really interesting question. I I think generally, sales tax doesn't have a lot of impacts like that for the simple reason, a lot of it's discretionary. You're buying things you may, yeah, there's certain things you're paying tax on, but do you have to buy a new refrigerator or not? You know, there's, you have some decisions to to do that. We have not seen, we haven't done that, but we do capture and leakage studies. We have not seen much impact from it, because most of us don't really, when we go to, let's say, we're in Westminster buying, I don't go there. Oh, I'm like, I don't really know what the tax rate is, so I don't think there's any big impacts. We have not studied other than capturing leakage, because what happens, you may have not have a certain business here, so you'll go out of the jurisdiction, or you'll have something here. People will come here because you have it and others don't. So it kind of washes out, I guess would be a good way to look at it. It's a great question.
Good. Um, on the the food processing uh, or the food products, um, so we've seen it increase near, and that's essentially because of inflationary uh, type, you know, so the cost of the whatever we're buying in the restaurant has gone up, and so therefore you pay
Right.
more more um, tax on that item. Um, obviously, the com- uh, competition to that would be someone that says, hey, it's gone up to, it's gone up so much that I'm going to, you know, go to the grocery store and cook at home instead of going out to the restaurant, right? Um, is there, um, are you seeing a tipping point to where we're getting to to that, to where we're gonna start to see, like, are we in danger on the restaurant side because of the inflationary uh, uh, m- measures that that we're seeing in restaurants? Now, obviously, we're also seeing that in general food products and the grocery store, so it's, you know, kind of muted, but um, are you, are you seeing any, um, you know, or should we be concerned about something that's been strong that may, we may see a reduction in?
I don't think so, except what's interesting, during the pandemic, we had so much pent-up demand to go out and people ate at home. I think we're starting, since the pandemic has lifted, people are going out more and more. But they're, they're also seeking out the experiential that we talked about earlier. So going to a mall where you can see a movie and buy food and have a drink or do things like that. We're seeing, I think we're seeing the restaurant industry shifting a little bit in what they're doing. We're seeing other places reinvent, so um, I think we're in pretty good shape there. Um, but you know, the continued higher cost may prohibit certain people going to other restaurants. We're seeing the increase in revenue in the lower price point restaurants because it's more affordable for most people. I think that's, I think that plays into the makeup of different cities' uh, restaurants. So the less expensive places are growing faster in terms of revenue.
Um, and then I, um, on your, I think it's slide six, twelve, um, is a per capita sales tax. So is per capita, is that based upon, um, like, so I have a family of five, including three teenagers. Uh, so my wife, my uh, myself and uh, three teenagers. Do, are we, do we count as five, or do we count as two?
Great, correct. So we do it based on total population. So the city of has X population, so your five would be counted in, and I'm sure your kids are like our family where they spend more than we do, it helps. But it's based on total population dividing it across the categories.
Okay, so for example, my family of five, we we spent, uh, our share of uh, sales tax or major X would be two ninety times five? Is that what that?
Correct.
Two ninety-one times five?
Yeah, right. I like how you're thinking about. That's actually a very interesting way to look at it. Yeah.
Um, and that's just, that's just the one point five percent, not total sales.
This is just one point five. Yeah, it's compared to the dol- total dollars from major X.
But that's for the trailing twelve months, not just for the third
Correct.
third quarter.
Correct. So it's a, it's a benchmark, benchmark year.
Totally. Okay, gotcha. All right.
Um, I think that's a positive number, because you can see you're continually growing up despite it. And that's why I like benchmarks. Since sometimes you have one quarter to quarter, it's it's a snapshot. This gives you a bit more of a bigger picture and more, gives it more stable and more realistic, so.
Yeah. Um, all right, well, I think those are all my questions. Did anyone else have any questions that came up through discussion? All right, excellent. Well, I, we appreciate your your work and for working with Cat and her team and uh, and so they can advise her, the council on projections and all that type of stuff.
So it was a pleasure. Thank you. It's nice to be with you in person this year too.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think uh, we are uh, uh, onto our next, uh, next item, um, which is our my, I'm I'm looking for your uh, title. Is it, are you? Assistant Chief, thank you. There you go, Sergio. All right, well, we'll call you Assistant Chief, uh, and give you the respect you deserve, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Excellent.
All right, starting off with the, my presentation here, um, I'm gonna go over a few things. Uh, we're gonna go over response times and improving police officer hiring and retention. Next slide, please. I want to give you a brief overview of what it means from priority one to priority five, and I'll go through those uh, one by one. Priority one, immediate threat to life exists, meaning something is going on at this very moment, an assault or something similar to that. A priority two would be a threat in the safety of incident, of citizens or a serious crime uh, that is in progress or just occurred. Perhaps a robbery or a theft, a serious theft that just occurred, and there is no present danger beyond what has just occurred. Um, priority one and two calls are dispatched immediately uh, to any available unit. Uh, there are instances where no units are available. The dis- a dispatcher has to work to clear units uh, from other calls before the incident can be dispatched. So if you look at the city of Santa Ana, and we are twenty to roughly twenty-eight square miles, uh, we are district-based policing, meaning we have four districts, and each district is roughly about seven square miles, and we assign a team of officers uh, to a particular district. If that entire district is busy with calls for service or they're tied up, we pull resources from neighboring districts. So our uh, city is split up between uh, first and main, and that, that's what makes up our four districts. Northeast, southeast, south coast, and then the west end, which goes all the way out to Upland. Uh, next slide, please. Going on to priority three, are the non-life-threatening but urgent in nature? Some of the examples, a shoplifter in custody, something you you would see at the main place mall or at one of our retailers. Uh, perhaps a burglary alarm call, things of that nature, and transits loitering. Uh, priority four, call, routine incidents that are non-life-threatening but require timely response. For example, somebody gets home and they realize that their house has been burglarized. You know, and there's nobody there now at that moment. They call us, they need a burglary report, uh, a stolen vehicle report. Somebody wakes up in the morning and their car is gone. Um, it also includes music disturbances and welfare checks, or you might have a parent that's calling a, calling in a runaway that's been um, a repeat offender, if you will, repeat runaway. And then your non-urgent calls are more of your administrative in nature, parking problems, parking problems, messages to be delivered, and patrol checks, and then we have our stray animals. Uh, to the next, please. Our average response times between priority one, two, three, four, and five um, have improved over the years. We do not have uh, the averages for two thousand twenty-three. We'll have that at the end of the year. Uh, as you can see, priority one and priority two is what we try to focus on the most in terms of what is needed in immediate police response. Um, has improved for priority one, and in some cases, priority two fluctuates. So the two thousand twenty average, as you can see, there was five minutes and eighty-five seconds. Two thousand twenty-one, five thirty-one, and then two thousand two, five point twenty-two. I can tell you Two thousand twenty-one, five thirty-one, and then two thousand two, five point twenty-two. I can tell you for, uh, two thousand twenty, uh, three, it has fluctuated from four minutes and forty-eight seconds to be a really good response time, right? To six minutes and one second. What is, what is, what do we factor in during that time? We factor in traffic, distance, where the vehicle or where the unit is coming from, and how many, uh, officers are needed to respond to that call. There are some calls that need one officer only, and there are some calls that need two, three, or four, or perhaps several, you know? If all your units are tied up in one particular area, I can tell you from a personal experience, back when I was a patrol officer, my longest, uh, code three response, which is lights and sirens, was from the area of like Bristol and Sunflower, all the way to, it was right around First and Sycamore. Uh, was the closest unit, and that's several miles away. It's probably been my longest, what we call a code three run in my career, and that was several years ago. So, uh, we are a densely populated city. So it does take some time to get from place to place when the traffic conditions are at their worst in our city, meaning daytime, morning rush hour, lunch hour, and then certainly the evening traffic that's coming in and going out. Going on to police officer hires. Uh, this is where we've had some challenges and we continue to address that on a regular basis. Uh, for two thousand twenty-two and then into two thousand twenty-three, we've hired twenty-one officers in both years. We have separated twenty-four hour or twenty-four, uh, officers and then twenty-eight officers in two thousand twenty-three. In two thousand twenty-two was a net gain of three. For two thousand twenty-three, we are at negative seven, and I'll go into that a little bit here. So the next slide, if I can just go beyond what we have here on this slide, you know, most of us, up until I think, uh, twelve years ago, around that time, we were the three percent of fifty police officers. I happen to be one of them. So at fifty years old, you can retire. That time has now gone to fifty-seven. So what you're starting to see now, uh, including myself, a lot of us that are at fifty or north of, just north of, by a year, two years, we're starting to retire because we're able to. Uh, there are some people that stick around a little bit longer. I've gone, I could have gone about a year and a half ago, but I'm gonna stick around a little bit longer. But most of us are leaving. The newer generation is, um, has to, can retire at fifty-seven, so that has an impact. So if you look at two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, all the way to two thousand twenty-three, that has been our hires. And we've had an average of, two thousand eighteen, we had, uh, twenty-eight separations. Two thousand nineteen, we had ten. Uh, two thousand twenty, we had fourteen. Two thousand twenty-one, we had twenty-eight. And in twenty-two, we had twenty-four officers separate, and thus far, we've had twenty-eight officers separated. Now, we look at the number of two thousand nineteen in terms of how many people were hired. That was a great year for Santa Ana PD. We hadn't hired that many people in a long time. Okay? So we look at that number, and what has impacted, if we can look at our recent history, what happened in two thousand twenty? It was the George Floyd incident. And as ugly as that is, uh, as it was, and the impact that it had on law enforcement and people not wanting to go into the profession. Since two thousand eighteen, we've had, and it's, and I, and I want you to understand, it's not just Santa Ana PD. It's, it's a national, and in some cases, it's a global problem, you know, in terms of people that have, countries that have similar law enforcement, um, operations as, as the United States does. But we had a huge success in two thousand nineteen, and then it's dipped from there. Okay? But we've maintained an average of, let's call it twenty-two. Okay? But since that time, we've also had a sixty-nine percent drop in applications, you know, which is, they're, they're not good numbers. But we are facing the challenges and we are working through it. Um, the numbers are a little deceiving, however. So for two thousand twenty-three, we had twenty retirements, and that includes, uh, IDR, industrial disability retirement. Somebody got injured, couldn't come back to work. Then you have the regular services retirements, which is the, which are the ones that I'm referring to, the three percent of fifty. Um, and then four officers lateral to other departments, meaning they left us to move on to careers in other cities, you know? It's rare that it happens, but it does happen. Um, we had one dismissal, uh, one probationary, uh, rejection. Someone didn't make probation. They weren't performing up to standards, and then two resignations during the, uh, the field training officer phase, which means they didn't perform well enough to stay on the job. Any questions with respect to that before I go on to Colts?
Yeah, it's a, so we'll, we'll go ahead and pause and then what's, so why don't we?
We actually continue or whatever you like, uh.
Oh, thank you. Questions. So, thank you for that. So twenty nineteen, there was a spike in hiring. And you said, you know, that was a great time for this. Why was it, what, do we have a lot of revenue? Do we have a lot of folks retire? You know, why was that such a successful or great?
That was a successful year for us because people were still pursuing the profession. That was a huge impact. Um, fifty was a unique number. Um, so that's where you saw the spike. We put that effort into it, but we still had bodies coming in. Uh, as a former background investigator with Santa Ana Police Department, I worked that unit for eight years, uh, about fifteen years ago. And I can tell you that when we held a testing process for applicants, in the morning, we'd have about two hundred, and then we would have to hold another one in the afternoon for about another two hundred. You know, people were just coming to us because they wanted to work here. As a matter of fact, I talk about lateral officers. I lateral to here from other agency back in nineteen ninety-five because I knew there was great opportunity here. So that's what we, um, uh, had back, back when people were still looking to get into this profession, you know? So there are some, um, uh, challenges there with getting people in the door, you know?
And my second question is, do we have cadet programs here in high school, in the schools?
Um, well, we have, we do have the cadet program. As a matter of fact, I'm a product of our cadet pro, or have a cadet program. We do have a cadet program. It's very successful. What is that for? It's for the, uh, young individuals that wanna be police officers or wanna get their feet wet. Um, and that ranges from eighteen to twenty-three-ish. Um, how a cadet program works, I always look at it this way. If somebody comes into the cadet program, if they're an explorer, which is, uh, thirteen to eighteen, and they come in and they get their feet wet, or they get exposed to it, and they go, wow, this is something I really wanna do, and they go on to be police officers, then the program has been a success. But on the flip side, if they come in and say, you know, I've got an interest in law enforcement, but then they come in and go, you know, I, I really do, but it's not, not what I thought it was going to be? That's also a success. Why is it still considered, in my opinion, as a success? Because if we get them through, it's better to have them exposed at the explorer or the cadet or a professional staff member position. And they realize, okay, this is a great profession, but it's not for me. Rather than, they come in, they go through the academy. We invest a lot of personal and financial, uh, into them, and then they realize it's not for me. You know, that's, you're not getting a lot of great return on your investment. You know, I look at every person that we hire, whether professional staff members or volunteers or police officers. Everybody is an, an individual investment. We put time, we put money, we put effort. We put so much into them that we want it, want them to succeed on an individual basis, so that the greater good is better as an organization. And I look at every individual, myself as a former field training officer. I wanted every one of my trainees to succeed. Because I know what it takes to make them successful. I know what it takes to support that, you know, on the front end, from the moment that we are having them go through backgrounds and then having them go through the academy. There's a huge investment in that. So I look at it as every individual is an investment, and I want them to succeed. So if we can get them to come in and have some exposure and say, yes, this is what I wanna do, absolute success. But if they also come in and go, this is great, but it's not for me, that is also somewhat of success if you can look at it that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, we have any other questions down here?
Uh, yes, I have a question. Um, thank you, Officer Martinez, for your presentation. Um,
It's Enriquez.
Enriquez.
That's okay. It's all right. No worries.
I, I wrote down the wrong.
No worries.
Um, so I just wanna make sure I understand clearly the issues that our city has in, as far as hiring, um, new officers. It's a problem that other cities are experiencing as well, or is it, is there something in particular to Santa Ana that is making it difficult to hire new?
I can tell you that across the nation, it's been a challenge. You know, you look at the George Floyd incident, and as ugly as that incident is, it had a huge impact on law, law enforcement. So it's not just a San Ana problem. You know, it's also problems across the United States, the Midwest, up north. Um, if you look at some of our neighboring agencies, um, if you look at some of the larger agencies, let's look at Los Angeles, they're down about a thousand officers, I believe. And that's huge for a city of that, that size. Long Beach has the same issue. They're down, I believe, a couple hundred officers, and they have several officers leaving there. So while we are at about a nine point five, nine point five percent vacancy, what does that equate to numbers? About thirty-four, thirty-five officer vacancies? There are agencies that are, in fact, have more vacancies as a result of the, uh, applicants that are not coming in. Now, what are, what are we doing to address that? Having come out of administration recently, um, and I might be getting ahead of, ahead of your question here, but we are addressing it on several levels. What does that take for us to do? Get more creative with our recruiting. We were testing once a month, but I can tell you, when we test on Saturdays, so is Anaheim, so is Newport, so is Irvine, so is Long Beach. So right now, the best way I can describe it is I was talking to a recruiter, a potential recruiter the other day. This is a buyer's market. You know, anybody can come along and say, okay, who's gonna offer me the best benefits? You know, who's gonna give me more bang for my buck in terms of, of, um, what is available to me as I go through my career? When I came to the Santa Ana Police Department, I wanted to be a Santa Ana Police Officer. I did not wanna go to any of my neighboring agencies. I didn't apply everywhere. I applied strictly for the city of Santa Ana because this is where I wanted to come to. I started my career elsewhere. But this is where I wanted to work, and this is where I've been for about twenty-eight, twenty-nine years now. Um, so what we did is we added a testing date on Tuesdays. Because if everybody else is testing on Saturday, it's gonna be a lot harder to get the people in the door. So let's throw a Tuesday in there. So we get lateral officers that apply as well, because I can tell you, if you're, if you're a lateral officer, and you wanna get off on a Saturday, uh, uh, a Friday night and a Saturday morning, so you can go test with the Santa Ana Police Department, because you wanna do a lateral transfer. And let's say you go ask your watch commander, the one that runs the, the district, and you go in there and go, hey, boss, can I get the, the morning off? And she says, yeah, sure. What, what do you wanna do? Well, um, I want to, I wanna go test with the city of Santa Ana. She's gonna tell you, yeah, you know, you need to go back in the field. We're, we're not gonna let you go. Um, so I see that aspect of it. So what we started doing, let's change for the market. So we started testing on Tuesdays, and then numbers have been tripling up, right? The other thing we've done, we've increased our, um, our recruitment team. So they're going, going out and doing more pop-ups, going to the, to the malls, to the gyms, to different events, focusing on Santa Ana College. You know, Santa Ana works three hundred and thirty thousand residents roughly. I just need about thirty-five of them to pick up and wanna do the job, right? But we're going everywhere. We have involvements at Camp Pendleton, at different, uh, sites throughout, uh, throughout the region. Um, and we also do advertising, and then we also have the incentives. So if you look at our incentives right now, we're at, um, coming in the door, sign bonus five thousand. But if you have a bachelor's degree, that's another five thousand. If you're a veteran, a veteran, plus you have a bachelor's degree, then that doubles. Okay? But I can tell you this much, as a former background investigator, I see value in different people. Uh, our department, our department is very diverse. I look at the individual that's coming out of the military. I see that individual as having quality. I see the college graduate as having quality to offer us. But I also look at this other individual who's had an everyday job, has maybe been involved in construction, and has no formal education, but what education do they have to offer us? The, the school of hard knocks. If they've had to put food on the table and they've worked hard, I like that individual too. Okay? So I like the diversity. So we don't just look at one profile, right? Because if you look at my department, our department, everybody's department here, our department, our internal community is very diverse, just like our city. So I see value in all those people. So we're looking at different, uh, areas to invest, to attract people to our organization. Because if we get them into the organization, we're hoping that they're going to stay a lot longer based on the opportunities that we can give them, you know? And I always say, if you can land a job in law enforcement, in, in police services, in Orange County, you should be doing all right. Santa Ana, in my opinion, happens to be the tip of the spear. It's a great organization. As I said, I've been there twenty-eight years. My younger brother's there. Uh, I couldn't imagine working anywhere else. Is that too much?
Uh, thank you for your very detailed response. You got ahead of my question, but you went exactly where I wanted to go. So, um, I did have a follow-up question. So just again, to be clear then, um, Santa Ana is competitive with other cities in terms of like pay and compensation. And you also talked about the incentive structure that, um, Santa, Santa Ana PD offers. So we are competitive with other cities as far as attracting, um, folks.
That is correct. We are competitive, you know? I, I will say though, people that come to the Santa Ana Police Department are, you know, I, I didn't come here to make, uh, uh, and I'll give you from, from a personal perspective. When I came here, I had no idea what my pay was gonna be. Didn't know, didn't care. Had no idea what benefits were. You know, I was a twenty-three-year-old young man coming from another city. And, uh, I just wanted to be a member of the Santa Ana Police Department. You know, had no clue what the pay was, never looked at it. Um, had no idea what the first comp was, until some very senior officer said, son, let me talk to you about this. And I had seniors, department elders that I referred to, that took me aside and said, you need to do this. You will do this. Trust me, the you from thirty years from now will thank me. Uh, so I was very appreciative of that. But I came here because I wanted to be a police officer serving this community. And that's what we look for in every applicant. Not to say that we have to be the same. That's not what we're looking for. But we want people that want to serve Santa Ana PD.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, I mean, what, what a phenomenal story for, for our city to be able to attract someone like yourself. So, uh, thank you very much. Um, I, uh, so I've been on this committee since, uh, since day one, and so, uh, we had a presentation back in twenty nineteen, I think it was. And so, you know, some of the same tables, and so I had to go back and look at that. So I did, you know, being the accountant, I of course stored in Excel, right? Um, and so that year that we had the fifty hires, okay? Um, and I remember seeing, I think it was in this room, you know, the, your counterpart who was here was, you know, because we're like, hey, well, there wasn't a really big drop in response times. And I was like, well, yeah, we hired fifty, but you gotta understand, they're in the academy. They're just starting their, you know, and so it was like, just wait and see. Okay? And so I was really, uh, looking forward to looking at this and, you know, looking at the, we'll just wait and see. And lo and behold, so twenty nineteen, you hire fifty, you had ten departures, and so you have a net increase of forty. Twenty twenty, you, we have almost a two-minute drop in priority one response times. Went from seven point seven three to five point eight five. And priority one from two, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, the year after we hired fifty officers. Um, a minute, over a minute of priority two, um, drops. Um, you know, and then you go to twenty twenty-one, it goes down another, uh, another, you know, point five, which would be another thirty seconds, so another half a minute, which, you know, as you know, on a priority one call, I would imagine every second counts. I mean, no matter what, right? Um, and so I, I was, you know, that fit, you know, the, that height, the correlation of the fifty, you know, or we'll call it the net forty increase to a drop in response time was, is, um, you know, statistically, just the data wise, very, very apparent. I, I almost, uh, w- wish we would have had that, you know, even some of that history in, in, in the table that you, that you gave. Um, oh, I, I, it's like my colleague here, he's thinking the same thing, because, uh, I was looking at the same fuzzy, uh, uh, fuzzy tape, fuzzy stuff from, uh, looking at the YouTube video on it. And I mean, it's just, it's so apparent that the, the more officers, you know, the, the, and, and so my concern is now we have a couple of years of negatives, negative nets, right? Are we going to see a, you know, a correction of that? Um, not only in the, you know, we're already seeing that correction in the priority, uh, uh, three, fours and fives. And those are, you know, again, I'm an accountant, so I color code things and, you know, so I have greens and, uh, you know, priority ones across the board, but yellows for a priority. you know, so I have greens and, uh, you know, priority ones across the board, but yellows for priority, you know, three, four and five, you know, recently, uh, you know, and you live this stuff daily. I just look at the numbers, right? Are you, is that, how concerned should a resident be uh, about a reversal of that trend of the decreasing response times because we're seeing that negative net um, hiring versus departure?
I take you all live here, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so when you see me, you're actually talking to your neighbor, because I live here as well. So to answer your question, um, these are concerning numbers, but they're also concerning to my family, okay? So what I have done personally, what we have done is look at these numbers and we are slowly moving to two officer units, okay? What does that mean? Two officer units. Um, when I have two officers in one police unit, because there are some calls that require two officers to respond. So for this month and moving into two thousand twenty-four, um, Santa Ana PD for a long time in all of Orange County has been one officer units. Um, so what we've started to do is put out two officer units on every shift. What does that mean to someone who's calling the police and I need help right now? Okay, what it means is that that officer doesn't need to wait for a follow officer. She doesn't need to wait for anybody because her partner is gonna be right next door to her in the same car in the seat next to her, okay? And that's really important when you're calling nine-one-one and you need some help right now. So we started to roll that out, um, because we do have um vacancies, there's also cost savings in having those vacancies. So what we are doing now is we are putting out additional units, uh, starting middle of the day, okay? Starting in the middle of the afternoon, okay? And this has so much more to do with just recall, calls for response times, uh, calls for service response times, but it also has to do with employee wellness, right? So what we've done is we're striving to put out eight additional officers per twenty-four hour period. So at the middle of the day, I'm gonna put out two, uh, two officer units to supplement what's already out there. And then in the afternoon, I'm gonna add another two, two officer units, so four and four. And they're going to go out there because during December, we see an increase in domestic violence. We see an increase sadly, tragically in suicides and some other sensitive type of familial calls that the holidays from Thanksgiving on um, present uh certain circumstances that need additional staffing. So the minute we roll that out, the response times dropped, okay?
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Because in my mind, I hear, oh, you've gone from uh, two, two, two patrol uh vehicles and now you have one patrol vehicle.
Yeah.
And so in my mind, I'm thinking, well, that should be, uh, now you have fifty percent less responders. But what you're saying is that on these hyper, on the like priority one and two, like if you're, if you're those two, two officers in those two cars, you have to kind of wait for both of you to arrive.
In, in, in some instances, and, and this is something I did myself as, as a young patrol officer, if I'm going on an emergency call and I need to get there and I know my follow officer, let's say she's a minute behind, she's two minutes behind, I'm still gonna go and I'm still gonna land, right? But there are calls that we have to have sent, we have to send two officers to, right? But if, if I put two officers in one car, they're gonna get there a lot faster, right? Because they're not waiting for anything because their backup is in the car in essence. Right? So with the vacancies that we have, we had more staffing throughout the day to bring those response times down. Now, to be very transparent, we're not adding bodies to the organization. We're putting out overtime, okay? And we're filling those spots for overtime officers that wanna come out and work extra hours. And they put in a ten-hour shift and they help support our patrol officers, but they're handling all different types of calls.
So, um, and so logically thinking of, okay, so that would help, that, that in theory should help our pri, you know, keep our priority one and two calls, but it might be at the expense, and I think we're seeing that on data wise, you know, maybe at the expense of those priority five type, type calls that you might, you know, a single officer can definitely go to. But now you've gone from two cars to, to one, and so, I mean, but that's a strategy that, that we're willing to take to be able to say, hey, priority one and two, or call priority one and two for a reason. Um, and so we're gonna continue to prioritize those and we might continue to see a decline in uh, service times with priority, you know, five type calls.
You, you may see that, but as I've told my officers and I told my watch commanders, those additional officers, I want them to handle everything from a parking ticket to the most extreme call that you can think of. Okay, so we're impacting customer service all the way around from priority one to priority five. Priority ones and priority twos are going to always just be that priority one, priority two. But if there are no priority one or priority two calls pending, let's make sure that we're providing good customer service for the priority three, four and five.
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, very good. I think, um, you know, the other thing, you know, twenty nineteen with those fifty hires, we have to remember that's also when we had uh, you know, a pretty, pretty substantial, I think, increase in pay. If, if I recall correctly and with, with a, with a contract and so, um, you know, I think it would be remiss to, to, to not mention that, hey, those fifty, uh, not everyone's gonna say, like, you're like yourself and say, hey, I just wanna go work for SAPD. Uh, you know, the, those benefits and the pay is definitely, uh, you know, part, part of, I mean, that, that fifty was not only, you know, the new strategy of recruiting, but also from a, you know, there was, was, uh, because I think wasn't, wasn't nineteen, beginning nineteen, the, yeah, the, the new. But, um, okay, uh, any other questions on before, before?
I, I have a question. It's more out of curiosity. Um, I know you went over the amount of hired individuals and people who have separated and I can definitely see where it's, the numbers may be misleading considering that about a third of them were retirees. Um, so just to look at the bigger picture, how many officers would you roughly say we have in the city of Santa Ana?
Right now, as of uh, this week, we are at from top to bottom, I believe, three fifty-four.
And then.
I, I can give you an exact number if you'd like.
No, I, I just wanted to look at, again, the bigger picture, because even though we've had twenty separate, I mean, again, a third of them are people or officers who have um, retired. And then just going back on, on the subject of the Cadet Academy, um, I know it was asked if we have one. I myself did not know if we had one or not. Um, and just to connect that back to the dec- decrease we've had of police officers since twenty twenty. Um, do we have revenue increasing going into in the academy and, um, the Cadet Academy and trying to get more individuals to join it, since you see uh, a great amount of success through those individuals who go through the entire program and are wanting to stay and go through with being a police officer?
Yeah, yes and no. Some carry, carry on and go through and then some see uh, success in the professional staff member positions. Dispatching community service officer, uh, forensics, if you will. So the Cadet program is separate from, let's say, the police recruit. Police recruit is, I'm being hired to go to the police academy and I'm gonna go through the six-month, six-and-a-half-month academy. And you can transition from police cadet to police recruit if that's what you wanna test for. But you also have the option to go into other parts of the organization that are not of sworn status, but professional uh, staff members.
That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, I do have a question, um. Chief Rodriguez, so, and maybe it's a correction or maybe it's my bad math, but I really want to make sure that we're all level set. In, in my mind, first of all, the reason why we're talking about this in a Mezur X Committee is because part of the language states maintenance, maintain effective nine-one-one response. Bottom line, that's taking care of our police officers and our uh, first responders, right? When it comes down to hiring police in twenty sixteen, your predecessor reported out hiring forty-three officers. The net from twenty thirteen to today, I don't think is negative. It's positive. Am I right by, am I doing the math correctly? Because from, and maybe you, you need to look at your own numbers from twenty thirteen on, but if I'm looking at the net from twenty thirteen to today, we're twenty-six officers above that which we had at that time, baseline being twenty, twenty thirteen.
Um, I believe those are the numbers that are, I, I'd have to go back and check them, uh, based on what I have from HR. I can definitely get back to you.
Well, there's definitely, there's definitely a trend. Don't get me wrong. I'm looking at, you know, your numbers in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two and um, outside of the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, twenty ten uh, net showing a, a increased positive. The twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two obviously show a, a negative. However, your years between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen still add up to a positive twenty-six officers hired in the last, I would say, what, ten years?
Yeah.
Since twenty thirteen. I just wanna make sure that the community and this board is fully aware that it's not that we're losing officers, it's that we're just trying to maintain what we have. Slowly trying to increase it because of the needs of the community.
Yeah, definitely. That's always the goal to maintain, right? And at every step, try and increase the numbers.
And the response times clearly, clearly show that, yeah, because I do remember like Chair Johnson mentioned that, um, I believe a priority one was at nine minutes or?
Uh, well, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, it was at eight point one-one.
Yeah.
And twenty twenty is now at five point five.
Yeah, so to get it down, yeah, that's, that's amazing, you know, and that, and that's the expectation. If, if anything, I don't really know what the national average is or what other cities, um, what those communities enjoy, but I would expect and it sounds that that's what the police department is doing is you're maintaining the competitiveness to retain the talent, attract the talent and keep up with community standards that are known, uh, not only within the city, but within this county and this state.
No, absolutely. Um, we do focus on retaining the talent so that we can continue to drop those uh, response times. There's so much that, so much more that goes into it as well, you know, in terms of employee wellness and uh, refocusing on where we need to put our officers. Um, something as simple as any additional officers, even if you're uh, positive for a particular shift, you wanna add additional because of the time of year it is.
Thank you. Uh, one last question for you and I agree with you. Um, you said that we're bridging the gap with overtime, uh, with additional resources. Where, where is the cost benefit analysis between allowing overtime or wanting overtime from our officers in a standard daily operating procedure versus having the resources to cover those um, objectives and policies that the police department has for the community?
Okay, so if I understand your question is where are we getting the funding from it or?
It, it, um, is there, I guess, if I'm a buyer and the city is a buyer of, of police department services, my question, I guess, to make it more simply is would it be less expensive for me to have more resources? Or keep the resources I have and pay them more overtime?
There, you know, when you're paying, when you're paying somebody uh, overtime, there are no additional benefits to it. So I understand your question now, sir. There are no additional benefits you're paying for. You know, it's always best to be fully staffed. That's the goal. That's the idea. Let's get as many officers as we can for frontline services. When you don't have those frontline officers, the, the, the one thing that we can do and accommodate is add with overtime. But the savings there is that you're not adding any more benefits to it. Their benefits don't go up, they don't go down. They are what they are. So what you're paying for is time and a half, and this is what you're, what it's costing you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, th- thank you very much. I think that's, no, I, there is a retirement benefit that increases with the time and half. So correct, it's just you wanna have additional health benefits and other, those types of benefits.
There, i- is there a benefit or additional benefits to go into your retirement?
Uh, me- meaning that, uh, for that one particular officer that is, uh, uh, now earning additional compensation, their future retirement benefit will go up.
I, I don't believe so, that's. It's based on your salary. I think that's, that's been.
That's correct. Overtime is not factored into pension calculation.
All right. So, uh, perfect. I think, uh, if there's any other questions, otherwise we can continue. I think you're gonna go on to the Colt, uh, and responding homelessness, uh, portion, is that right?
All right, here we go. Uh, Colt Quality of Life Team is a multi-departmental response to issues related to homeless, homeless, uh, encampments. Um, the Santa Police Department is a lead agency involved with Colt. There's Public Works involved, um, Parks and Rec that are involved. Some of the responses that we have in Colt, uh, security and enforcement for day-to-day activities, uh, outreach and engagement. Uh, if you drive around the city, you'll see our team of officers that are out there um, collecting and addressing the encampment issues. Um, the, how does somebody get into that? My Santa Ana calls for services that are generated from a private person, uh, direct community complaints, some that come to me, um, and then some complaints that come from city employees that we collaborate with, Public Works, um, and Parks, uh, Parks and Rec. Now with, um, the grant funding, we will also work with, uh, CityNet and the County of Orange Healthcare Agency to vet referrals for admittance, admittance to homeless shelters. Um, there is, with our organization, uh, there's the enforcement approach. There's also the, uh, approach to help house individuals that actually have a nexus to Santa Ana. Um, we do come across individuals that have no direct connection to Santa Ana. We do our best to house those individuals. For the outreach that we did, we have that graph there and it has, um, been some consistency in terms of contacts. Uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, was a high number and then it dipped down. That was two thousand twenty-one into two thousand twenty-three where we are now. The total contacts that we've had is, are four thousand one hundred and forty-seven. The arrests and citations have been, uh, have gone up and now they're down to one thousand five hundred and sixty-six. The sheltered has been to date three hundred and twenty-one that are done by the Quality of Life Team, okay? Um, so for us, it's contacts, arrests and citations, and then the sheltering of individuals here in Santa Ana. In terms of Colt staffing, we first started back in two thousand twenty with two officers. And obviously with the issues that we've had, we have grown that team to where we are now. We are currently at eight officers and one sergeant. Uh, where we are now in terms of two thousand twenty-three, starting back in two thousand twenty. Uh, it would be ideal to have a larger Colt impact, a Colt, uh, footprint, which is what we're looking for. What we are going to be doing is, and what we are doing right now, because our Colt team are, the actual team works either Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday. They're on a four-ten schedule. So what we're doing is adding additional officers, again, on that overtime, Friday through Monday, so that the weekend also has coverage. That's important to have that, right? Um, so that's all I have for Colt. Um, any questions on that?
Let's go ahead and, uh, ask for questions. Over, I, I'll, I'll have some if no one else says, but go ahead.
Um, how are homeless encampments defined? Like, what does that constitute?
Homeless encampment is going to be any location where a homeless individual or individuals have uh, set up a, a, what you would call, well, which, what I would describe as a place where they've set up uh, a small area that would constitute their domicile. Could be a sleeping bag, could be a tent, you know, something that we've seen from time to time. That's what I would consider an encampment. Anywhere where they're, they're staying and they've got something set up where it's, they consider it their home. And that could be a set of boxes, a tent, uh, a sleeping bag, things of that nature.
And, and it could just be one individual, one unhoused individual.
It could be one. Or it could be several.
Okay. Um, with regards to placing unhoused individuals in shelters, um, do they need to have some kind of connection? Um, do they need to have some kind of connection to Santa Ana in order to be housed or placed in a shelter here in the city?
We do our best to get those that are from Santa Ana housed in Santa Ana. And those that are not or do not have a nexus, we do our best to get them back to where they need to be, i.e. home for their home area.
Okay. Are there vacancies? Within the the Colt team? Like, are there positions that are unfilled? I know you mentioned that as of uh twenty twenty-three, there are eight officers and I think you said.
I do believe at the moment, we have two officers that are on light duty uh from injuries. And uh, but we have eight funded positions and we do add additional resources. Friday through Monday to cover that weekend gap. And those that wanna uh work additional hours, we have that as well uh during the day.
So that, but that would be considered fully staffed?
Yes.
Okay. I think those are all the questions I have right now.
Thank you.
I just had one question, um, what is E S G grant funding?
That is the Emergency Solutions Grant. Um, and that's in collaboration with CityNet and Orange County Healthcare Agency. Uh, to vet referrals and admittancees to homeless shelters.
Is that federal money or state money?
I believe that's state, no, state money.
State money, thank you.
Excellent, thanks. Um, on, how how many non-P D um Colt members or personnel are there?
Ooh, that's a great question. I don't, in terms of CityNet and Orange County Health.
Um, so like, when you would go, like, if you were to get called. And there, you know, you you have a a someone from the the P D, the P D side of Colt, go, are they going like? Maybe we can ask in a different way cuz it's not your department, uh, so like, would we, would they go with two non? Police officers, more like, you know, a mental health specialist, a, you know?
I see what you're saying. So we we generally have one mental health specialist with us, but then we also have a cleanup crew that comes with us. And that could be anywhere from two to four, sometimes more. It all depends on what they're handling that day.
And are your Colt officers, are they also going in pairs or is it?
They're in pairs, absolutely.
Um, just, you know, one of the things that this this uh, uh, uh. My goodness, committee, uh, committee, thank you. What are we? Has kinda always recommended is trying to, you know, because we, you know, we we've felt that. You know, officers need to be, just like you said before, you know, priority one, priority two, you know, even threes and fours and fives. And so switching to where. Okay, something, you know, that does, do two officers need to go and respond to a um? You know, s- someone that is, you know, at a uh having a crisis at a bus stop. Type type of thing, which obviously you could evaluate that after the fact very easily and say, yeah, we didn't need to have, you know, two officers here. Going into it might be a completely different story, right? And so, I mean, what is there, from from your experience, is there a way to be able to reallocate some of those eight? Officers into, and before I'm gonna let you answer that, I'm gonna give an example. So I was just at. MHA with Sergeant Martil, and I forget who is. Uh, who the other officer was, I mean, he is physically determining the nexus to 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 Santa Ana. In terms of referrals, I mean, I think that's the sergeant, your one sergeant.
That's my one guy.
Right, um, and he he's determining the nexus to Santa Ana and making the contacts to. Uh, either to uh, um, you know, to uh Carnegie or to Yale or. To where in my mind, I'm in that, seeing that meeting going, I'm not sure if I wanna have, you know, my sergeant, you know. Picking up the phone and talking to Yale or Carnegie, to where, I mean, it feels like there could be. Maybe some other uh avenues that would better, you know, allocate those, and we have a scarce resource. In police officers, I think we can all agree. Um, you know, is that the best use of everyone's time to? You know, to, or would it be better for, you know, someone, a non, I guess it'd be, you know, how how can we utilize non-sworn officers? To be able to maybe do some things that sworn officers are doing, that they could be doing something else.
I can answer, definitely answer that with some clarity, so. Mon- Sergeant Montel, I'll speak of him specifically uh for a moment. He has definitely developed a niche. He's exceptional at what he does. He has developed uh rapport with certain individuals. Um, there's a lot of weight behind the name Sergeant Montel, there's a lot of weight. Uh, his name in the world of Colt and homelessness carries a lot more than mine, and I got three stars on my collar and they're gonna listen to him. Because he's built such a niche and he's become such caring expert at it. You know, the guy really cares about what he does. And he does it well, he does it extremely well. So while he may feel comfortable approaching somebody to be able to send to um. Uh, professional staff members, if you will. Um, to a situation where you may have a homeless individual that. Um, could present a poten- potential danger to those individuals. Once that individual has crossed the line and has created an unsafe. Environment for those individuals, it's almost too late for that. So having two officers respond about for officer safety is absolutely a necessity. Could some officers do it with one? Yes, I can probably go out and make ten contacts and I'll be alright. But I don't wanna take a chance with my personnel, be it professional staff members or sworn peace officers. I want to be able to have them work in the environment that is safest for them. For the incidents or the issues or the matters or the circumstances that they're addressing. So while it is a multi uh departmental approach. Um, it's important to have that sworn aspect for that safety, safety in the numbers in terms of who's there. Uh, and a lot of times the officers let the uh professional staff members do what they need to do, but. Um, I wouldn't want one of my relatives who's a professional staff member out there on their own. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I I I think so, I mean, I, I mean, and Sergeant Martil, I agree with you, he he is phenomenal, he he has developed his rapport. Um, and people respect him and all those types of things. Um. Gosh, I I just, I I still just, uh, I mean, one of the things we struggled with this group, I think since day one. Is, you know, allocation of scarce resources, and I think we, you know, the. Our officers are scarce and and um, and I think ultimately we're also very concerned with. Um, you know, the ramp down of when this money is no longer. You know, we're at, we have to start figuring, you know, something out that, you know, even though I know Kat and her team have, you know. Uh, are putting the plan together, are planning, you know, try try to, you know, assist with that, but at the same time. Um, I mean, to to be able to. You know, takes, take uh, reallocate resources to where. Um, they're they're absolutely needed the best from a dol- not only a dollar perspective, but also it serves to the community perspective. You know, about that balancing act. Um, is. I I think a struggle for 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 this group, uh, cuz I think since day day one has been one of our. Uh, recommendations of, uh, if I recall correctly to the council, is to be able, hey, gotta continue to look at. Allocation of 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 uh, you know, non-sworn, utilizing non-sworn officers or maybe doing some things that, whether that's. Parking tickets or responding to. Um, I I don't, I don't, you know.
Yeah.
You know, and so the, I'm I'm trying, I'm I'm struggling with, well, how do we, you know, we say that, but how do we do that? You know, as this group, we always say it, but. You know, where's that actually, where can that actually happen?
Yeah.
And I'm not expecting you to have any answers, so.
Well, I can give you say, you know, w- I always like to take a solutions-based approach. And we have a set of circumstances, we identify it. And what's gonna work right now and what may work later on down the road are two different things, but we always look at it from a solution-based approach. In terms of your reference to parking control or a parking ticket, we do have a parking control department, right? But at three o'clock in the morning, my sworn peace officer, when she's out there and she's with her partner. She's my parking control officer, because if somebody's calling at two o'clock in the morning saying, somebody's blocking my driveway. She's gonna be the one that's gonna go out and handle the call, right? Um, so we do have several professional staff member. Uh, positions, and and if I could, um. One thing that we're trying to get fro- get away from, and I'm not here to correct anybody, but. We're trying to get away, at least in in my industry, get away from the term non-sworn. Nobody likes to be non-anything, right? So we refer to them, every everybody's somebody, right? Um, so we refer to them as a uh as professional staff members. Uh, we don't, I personally don't refer to manning a position, we now stop it. Cuz we have a lot of females. So, uh, if I could help just convey that that uh, that vernacular, if you will. But um, we have many professional staff members in this organization. That do a great job. Um, and I can say this much that I, as a peace officer, I can go out. My partner and I can go out and she and I can go out and handle business and take care of the bad guys or take care of some problem. But if you want a police department to run really well. You have to do it with professional staff members because they make the world go round, bottom line. You cannot get anything done in a police department, and I can say this after thirty-two years of service. Professional staff members make our world go around. We would, uh, it would not be a good day if all our professional staff members decided, you know what, we're done. We're gonna just, we're just going to walk out the front door. You know, professional staff members have a huge impact, so we do have several positions within the organization, whether it's dispatch, parking control. Uh, police investigative specialists that help our detectives. They're not sworn investigators, but they still uh investigate misdemeanor crimes, right? So that takes. An individual that is of sworn status and we could put her back out in the field, but we have a police investigative specialist. And she can work in domestic violence, she can work in special crimes, you know? So there's so much that we can do with professional staff members that actually exist right now.
Are they easier to hire than than your sworn officers?
The process is similar in terms of the standard. But they are easier to hire and quicker to hire. Why is that? There is no academy involved. Is there training? Absolutely, there's training. But if we hire them, we go through the orientation and day whatever after that orientation, they're working. You know, they just have to go through the training with a field training officer, be it an investigator, detective. But um, we get them. Uh, working almost immediately.
Um, I'd like to add to that, uh, we speak with their admin section, uh, admin division all the time. And they have a heck of a time hiring people because they do have to go through those. Intensive background checks to be a part of the police department, no matter what capacity they're working. So I I personally believe, and and the assistant chief may have a different opinion. But I personally believe that a police officer goes into this expecting and knowing that they're gonna go through this. Very rigorous background check and and everything else to get their job. I think your standard account clerk. Or, you know, some other position, maybe that's a a little bit less anticipated. And I think when they go through it, I think that scares a lot of people away. Um, just because of the length of time and the intensity of it. My husband's been through it twice at other cities. Um, and he's a CPA, but he's worked with with the police department. And uh, so I think there is a little bit of a difference there.
Yeah, thank you, and I can add to that for just a moment. You know, if we look at some of our agencies across the United States, they're starting to drop some other standards. Here at Santa Ana, we are not dropping our standards. Our community deserves better than that. If we drop the standards. We're gonna fill that two, three, four, or five years from now, and it's, it wouldn't be healthy for the community. Thank you, Matt.
Alright, um, well, I I think that's great, uh, uh, great background and uh. You know, I I think it's from someone that, uh, you know, wa- was was around for the first presentation of this a few years ago and. Uh, you know, we were, you know, kind of told, uh, well, just wait and see about response times, wait and see about some of that. I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased that, you know, the results are are there. Uh, I know that one of the things that that uh that frustrated us was there was not a, we were not able to be told, uh, well, what what's our goal? For response times, you know, with these additional X number of officers. W- was our goal, wh- do you have a goal for what you're, like, your twenty twenty-four, like? Priority one type response times would be, or is it, uh, are you kind of, I mean, obviously. As you get lower, as you get closer to zero, it's harder to get closer to zero, right?
Right.
Um, and so, are you? You know, kind of at where you think we should be at, or wh- wh- what's your kind of goal for the department coming up?
If, and. I'll tell you this, as if I may step step out of my assistant chief role and speak to you as a resident. I like the four forty-eight number. Okay? I'd like to see it at four thirty, I'd like to see it at four minutes for that priority one and priority two. Okay? Um. That would be ideal for me, the six minutes and above. That really is reflective of calls for service, what time of the year we're in. In the summer, the calls for service pick up, July and August. Are are busiest months, but you know, they're also busy in Huntington Beach, in Newport, uh. In Laverne, just the summer does something to people and the calls for service go across. They go up across the region. I would be comfortable with uh response times right around the four four mark. You know, but if you're someone in need and you need the police right now, you want it to be, you know, less than ten seconds. You know, you wanna be on the phone with nine one one and you can hear the sirens in the background, that's what you want, right?
Wh- when was the last time you, I mean, I was surprised that when the the grid, your grid is first in Maine. Um, and is that, I mean, obviously you're a data-driven department, I'm 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 assuming. Is that still, is that the right grid? Um, you know, especially when I think, ob- obviously, you know, if you're at the corner of First and Main, you know, it's not like, oh, no, this isn't my. That's not my.
Alright. That corner's not mine, right?
But, I mean, I I i- is that still the right, when you look at that, you evaluate?
I can tell you, uh, I'll give you a historical perspective here, several years ago, we went to a. District and beat system, okay? What that is, our districts remain the same, and if you look at our city, we're roughly just shy of twenty-eight square miles, right? So we have four districts, so about seven square miles. Uh, if you look at the southeast district, which is east of Maine, south of First, and we can all say that. Outside of three to four square miles, there's a lot of heavy industrial area that uh we don't get too many calls about, you know? And then you've got the west end that goes all the way from. Um, I'm sorry, uh, First and Flowers are the quadrants, not First and Main, I misspoke, it's First and Flower. So First and Flower, uh, West of Flower, all the way to Euclid is the west end, south of First Street. Is South Coast District, which are busy, right? But what we tried at one point, this was several years ago, we went to a beat system within a district. Okay? Um, look at it as in, you've got the state of California, then counties, okay? So we tried to prioritize a little better and give people. Responsibilities for particular beats within the district. So we tied them to an even tighter area. I can tell you, it didn't work because they were stuck in that one area and they were responsible for that. So we actually did away with that, um, and studies have actually shown that. Larger district coverage works out better for the entire district rather than the beat. Does each individual, you know, person on a block wanna know their beat officer? And they wanna know who who's actually patrolling my 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 beat, right? But with district-wide policing, you have several officers covering that one area. And if for whatever reason, one district gets busier than the other, then neighboring district will pick up. I know my watch commanders, I've instructed them, if you've got a hot call, priority one, priority two, and my dispatcher's know. And a district is tied up, but there's a few units across the district, guess what? Who's getting pulled from there? They're going over to this priority one, priority two call. So this is a district placing that has worked for us. And and we're gonna continue it.
So my my take, my takeaway, though, should be that you guys, you're continually looking at, you know, what the best. Methodology, whether that be beat, tried it, that didn't didn't do that great, you're looking at studies of, you know, what? What what is best practices for other communities that what might work best here? We're not stuck in the static. Just because it's been done this way for twenty years.
Correct, and and you 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 hit on a point that 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 I absolutely love is, uh, and I'll use my own words, is, well, that's the way we've always done it. That that is a horrible, horrible reason to keep doing things. So that is one of the reasons why we've put this two-offshore uh unit into to uh. Into patrol, and quite frankly, our officers love it. You know, officers love being in the car with somebody else, and you develop a good relationship. You get the calls faster, and quite frankly, it's where, less wear and tear on the units, less fuel that we're using. Uh, if you have several single officer units, it's gonna look. And this is one example that I often use, if you have several. Officers in single officer cars, it's gonna. Officers in single officer cars, it's gonna look like we have more police officers, right? There's a black and white, there's a black and white, there's a black, yeah, you see them everywhere. But what does that mean to the person that's calling nine one one? They don't care if it's a one officer or a two officer car. They just want the police there. So while we may have less. Police cars out in the field, but we have. More officers out in the field. Does that make sense? So ostensibly. It looks like there's not that many cars, but you actually have more and we're adding more. And we're doing that with staffing. I'm putting additional cars out, uh, every day. So.
Excellent. Um, we have any other questions?
Uh, I do. I have a comment and a quick question. Um, I'm only speaking for myself here, um. But I think that all of us here can agree that the city's resources are in fact limited. And there's always going to be a question of how to allocate those resources. So for me personally, um, I appreciate the fact that. Uh, we are allocating resources to cult specifically. Because addressing homelessness and, or unhoused individuals is a big issue, an important issue for the city. And in fact, it's a directive that's. Named in the, uh, measure X language. Um, not only police response times, but also homelessness. So I, I'm glad that, uh, you've, um, dedicated a sergeant to the cult team. Because as you've explained, um, he really. He, he really, uh. Loves what he does and his name carries a lot of weight. Um, and he's built great relationships with different agencies. Um, so to me, that's important. Uh, because again, on, you know, homelessness and unhoused individuals is such an issue here in the city. Uh, my brief question is, these eight officers that are currently part of the cult team, are they dedicated specifically to cult? Or do they also handle other calls and other issues?
They are your cult team. They are the community's cult quality of life team. They're absolutely dedicated to that.
Okay. And you did say that you added this, this weekend team, correct? And how long has that been in place?
Ooh, I wanna say it's been going for, uh. Probably a good year.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been going for a while.
And they specifically handle calls, uh, between Friday and Sunday?
Friday and Monday.
Friday and Monday.
So if I can clarify, so part of our cold team works. Monday through Thursday and then Tuesday through Friday because they're on a four ten, right? So we're light for cold on Monday and Friday, but we add, we supplement that, so we stabilize. Friday through Monday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chief, quick question. Uh, in a twenty-four hour period, how many officers are typically allocated per district?
Uh, per district, um. And it, well, let's see here. So you have three shifts. Okay, three shifts. And depending on what, which district it is, if it's South Coast. South First, West of Flower, that team for watch three. Six P M to six thirty is gonna be anywhere from six state officers, including a sergeant and a corporal. That same day watch team could be, uh, four or five. Okay? So each, uh, shift. Is going to have. Thirty-seven. The thirty-five. To thirty-seven broken up throughout the week. Okay.
Per district.
Uh, no, not per district, that's citywide. So per district, you're looking at anywhere from. Uh, four to seven officers, depending on which day of the week it is. Okay, and we're supplementing that, uh, with those additional officers. So that you get an idea of how the coverage goes for our shifts, which is important to know. We go from five thirty in the morning to, uh, six P M. That's your day watch shift. Those are your day watch officers. We have an, uh, a watch two ship, which we call our mid-watch that starts from two P M. To two thirty A M. And then at six P M, we have the grave airship or watch three that goes from six P M to six thirty in the morning. And that's the coverage there. And then what I've done is I've, uh, allocated additional, an additional eight officers to cover every day. Starting from, um, from, uh. Noon. To ten P M. And then from four P M to two A M. To add additional resources so I can take those call response times and cut them down. During this month. And if it continues to go well, because we do have that cost savings with vacancies. We look to continue it in January as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right, we have any other, any other questions? Thank you very much, uh, very informative, um, appreciate what, what you do for you, you and your, your entire team for, for residents and. Uh, yes, appreciate it.
All right, you're very welcome. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, so we are moving along. Thank you very much for that and. Let's see, we are on to. Number six, I think, right? Alexander, you wanna take it away?
Sure. So good evening committee members. So. I'll be providing you with the brief update on our measure X revenues for our current fiscal year. So that will be a fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So this is a summary of our total receipts for the three months for this fiscal year. Uh, so this will be receipts from July through September. So far, we've received twenty-one point four million dollars net of C D T F fees. Uh, the month of July and August represent estimated advances and then the month of September. It's a true up payment. So I was, as we previously discussed, uh, we typically get advanced payments and then we get a true up payment every quarter. Okay. So this is a comparison between, uh, our previous fiscal year. So this is twenty-two, twenty-three and our current fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. The periods covered are the same, which is July through September for both years. So there was an overall decrease of five hundred eighty-four thousand or two point seven percent decrease. Uh, I'll go over a little bit more detail for the reason for this. So for, for the prior charts were based on a cash basis. Uh, this report, this slide on, this report on this slide. Is using the reporting period, uh, and this is, um, through quarter two, twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, the most recent information, as you can see on the chart, we've historically been seeing increases, uh, for measure X on a year-over-year basis. Except for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty due to the pandemic. I included a trend line on this chart, uh, for your reference. This is a straight blue line on the, on the chart. Uh, our most recent quarter is lower under, is under this trend line compared to the. Previous quarters in twenty twenty-two. So we could see that revenues. Uh, decrease compared to this trend line beginning in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. And with most recent information, this trend is, the trend is continuing this trend line, but it's still under that, uh, that trend line. So our original revenue estimates for this current fiscal year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four was eighty-eight point six million dollars. Uh, the, this estimate, uh, was provided by ourselves, our consultant Fran, um, and the company. Uh, with the most likely projections based on information available in March twenty twenty-two. Uh, on the November seventh, uh, council meeting, they staff provided an update, uh, to council during the first quarter, uh, budget update. So measure X. Sales tax consultant has noted that, um, our updated revenue projections now is eighty-five point nine million. So this is a two part. Two, two point seven million decrease, uh, as our consultant noted earlier. Uh, we're experiencing a decrease in new vehicle sales and taxable construction material, which, uh, is impacting our measure X revenues. Uh, the next step is to provide a mid-year update, uh, to council. So our budget group. Uh, is gonna review data through December. So this includes revenues and expenditures. It will provide an update, um, in the month of February. So. That concludes my brief update. available for any questions?
All right, um, we, we start over here and go this way.
Sure, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation, Alex. I appreciate it. Um, question for you, and I think maybe it's for director, the director Downs also. Um, in the last meeting, there was a. Mention of measure X revenue is more than sales tax revenue. Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah, that's still accurate.
Okay, so our decrease was, uh, estimated, uh, revenue. Was reported after the city council, two million dollars short. I, I didn't catch the total. What was the total revenue expectation for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
For twenty-three, twenty-four, we reduced our estimates by two point seven million. From our original estimate. Which original estimates were eighty-eight point six million. This was based on. Uh, sales tax information from our consultant back in March. We typically have to adopt our budget in June. Uh, so that's the information that we have back then.
And by the time we get an update from the sales tax consultant, the, the ship has already sailed on the budget. So that's why we use the March numbers and then. If it's something different, like it was this year, a significant decrease, then we bring it back with the first quarter report. So that's exactly what we did.
I think that is it. I just wanted to understand that. Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions.
No questions. Thank you.
And just to be clear, so when we say next step, so provide mid-year budget adjustments if needed. So are you go, uh? Cause you already gave council a heads up about this and then so is next step. Okay, a stronger heads up or?
No, no, if needed.
Okay.
So if, if we get further information from our sales tax consultant, where they're like, eh, now we're seeing this, you know, maybe it goes up, maybe it goes down, maybe it stays the same. Um, but like I explained, uh, to this group during our last meeting, I'm, I'm very hesitant to just. You know, let things go up, down, up, down, up, down, you know, quarter by quarter. And so I'm really very cautious on that. But it was definitely warranted to take the estimate down with the first quarter report. Now, if there's some more fluctuations in the consultant's estimates in time for us to go to mid-year. I'll take a step back and kind of, you know, look at some of my other resources and, and make a judgment call as to whether or not I'll make any further adjustments. So that's why it says, uh, if needed. So there may be no adjustments at mid-year.
And do we already make two point seven million of?
We did. That was with the first quarter report, the first meeting in November.
Gotcha, okay. Perfect. So the if needed is just in addition to the two point seven.
Correct.
Okay.
And this also includes other funds besides the general fund. So like, for example, you know, grant funds that we receive or. Adjustments that need to be made. We potentially could make adjustments for that, but it's not just specific to the general fund.
Well, that's a great question. So I apologize for heading in, um. So we're talking about only the type of revenue that comes in for measure X.
Correct.
Um. For the city council, what was reported. What our budget will be. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Did, was there, and there was a mention last. The last time, uh, this meeting happened, three months ago, was revenue in other areas was up. And it made net zero. Was the city council advised that this is a net zero? So even though we're going down in measure X?
Absolutely. Uh, that's exactly what our first quarter report said. So we were able to take our estimates up in some other areas, bring it down for measure X and we pretty much. It, I think we had some net very minor amount.
Yeah, it was under a million, um, overall changes to it. And so, yeah, like you mentioned, there was some increase that, some revenues that increased estimates. Measure X we decreased, but overall, I would say it's a net impact of in material amount.
The city overall. Got it. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for asking that because in my mind, I was like, I didn't think we had a two point seven million dollar decrease and. Uh, so when, when everything gets smashed together, that's okay. Excellent. Awesome. Thank you. Um, any other? Well, questions or, okay, so I think we move along to our, um, last item, which, uh. Is also with you, Alexander.
Yes. So this one, I don't have an actual presentation, but it's actually the report that was posted online. I think some of you have seen it in pass, but I just wanna briefly walk over this to like briefly, um, kinda mention a couple of sections in it. And then if you have any comments or questions, I could answer them at the end.
Um, well, that's getting queued up. Is, is the audit done for June thirtieth?
Our financial audit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Your CFO. Comprehensive.
Yeah.
They call it, they, they changed it now.
They audited financial statements.
Annual financial report.
Earlier than, uh, normal? I feel like it's, it's, uh.
It's about the right time.
Okay.
It was dated December eleventh, yes.
Eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, last year was the eighth, this is eleven, it's, it's the same thing.
That's government. We live on acronyms. We, we eat acronyms for breakfast, you know?
Oh, that's the one. All right, so, um, good evening again. So I'm just gonna go over a brief, uh, sections of, of this report. Some of you have seen it like I mentioned before. So the first, the first and second page of the report, it really goes over background about measure X. And just to give you a brief summary on it, you know, measure X was approved in twenty eighteen, uh, Santa Ana borders approved measure X. Which is a city servant enhancement, uh, measure. Uh, so measure X is a one and a half increase in sales tax. Uh, the valid measure included language, uh, to maintain effective nine-one-one response, retain firefighters. Uh, police officers addressing homelessness, fixing streets. Uh, maintaining parks, youths. Senior services as well as unrestricted general purposes. Um, in addition. This report also includes a brief explanation of what, how the measure X citizen oversight committee works. Uh, this goes over your responsibilities as a measure X committee members. Um, you know, that you act in an advisory role to city council. In addition, this includes reviewing summaries of quarterly. Year-to-date revenues generated, reviewing budgeted and actual expenditures on a quarterly basis. As well as preparing an annual report to city council, and this is typically done in the month of March. Uh, pages three and four of the report. Uh, page three specifically, uh, this includes a summary of measure X revenues. Uh, for our prior fiscal year, which is twenty-two, twenty-three, as mentioned before. We received a total of eighty-six point eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Uh, measure X revenues were lower than the budgeted projections of eighty-eight point one million dollars. Um, actual, uh, receipts were one point three million lower than our original projections last year. But the year-over-year increase was, uh, one percent, uh, to the prior years. And now on page four. So this is, um, we have, you know, our original adopted budget had a eighty point six million dollars for measure X. Uh, but this would be, um, this will be for our current fiscal year, twenty twenty-four. As previously mentioned, we did adjust our projections down to eighty-five. Point nine million. And then November seventh council meeting date. Um, so now, uh, our adjusted measure X revenues represent twenty-one point five percent. Of our general fund. Uh, pages four and five of the report. We go five. Keep going down. Yep. So this section of the report, it provides you a high-level summary of our total expenditures for last year. So we spent seventy-one point six million dollars on program expenditures. In addition, we have fifteen point three million dollars of budget carryovers amounts to be committed. That were committed, but now you expend it as of June twenty twenty-three. Um, typically, you know, projects, uh, take time to develop and complete. So this takes time for. For design, construction. So it typically takes a couple of years. So that fifteen point three million dollar. Is a carryover that will be, um, you know, to allow departments to complete those projects in the next fiscal year. The last page. So this last page of the report, it basically, it's, uh, an exhibit. Um, it gives you, uh, uh. A summary by fiscal year showing total revenues and expenditures since inception of measure X. Uh, through fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the city has received a total of three hundred and twenty-three point three million dollars for, uh, measures. Measure X revenues. Of this, uh, we spent. Uh, two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million, uh, total additions to the general fund balance have been sixty, sixty-three point seven million. And this addition to the fund balance were mostly used for carryover requests, like to complete projects. Uh, the last two sections of the report are exhibits one and two. These go into greater detail. Um, this is the first exhibit one is. For our current fiscal year, it gives you detailed information as to how measure X revenues, uh, expenditures were used. Uh, and exhibit two of the report, it's more, um, gives you, um. Also detailed information, but this includes all the fiscal years. So this concludes my update on the annual report. Available for any questions you may have.
All right, we're gonna start from my left again. If we have any, any questions or?
Not at this time. Thank you for the report.
Think I have a question every time. Maybe it's more proclivity on this one. Am I right by saying that this report is what is shared with the city council? This is what gets presented to the city council? So would you mind showing me, uh, assistant director Trinidad?
Yes.
Um, the revenue page again? The one for this year or for, um, for, yeah, for this year? Cause it was summarized by month. Yeah, it's probably like page three. I know this is very cosmetic, but I, but I think. I know this is very cosmetic, but I but I think we need, as a measure X committee, we've been driving home this point over and over again. I love the fact that we're showing this for this year. Is there a way of including? Like we did for the revenue report, a trend line that will go up all the way to twenty thirty five. The point being.
Twenty thirty five?
Yes. The point being is to start hammering the amount of revenue. It estimated between now and twenty thirty five showing the drop of revenue in twenty nine. And it be, I believe it's thirty four, thirty five, right?
No, thirty nine.
Thirty nine. It's thirty nine. It's a ten and ten.
It goes down to one percent in twenty twenty nine and then sunsets completely in twenty thirty nine. Yeah.
That might be a little too big of a trend line, but I I. Maybe, you know, that twenty twenty nine is a little bit close and I know it's still almost. You know, it's out there, but at the end of the day.
I think we can put something in.
Yeah. I I like the idea of visually showing the council just how much of a drop. Is there, even though it's years away, so they could start. Internalizing visually exactly how much is being lost. Because, you know, one percent is or ha- half a point is still a lot of money. And at that time, it's going to be about. Thirty million dollars. But I mean, that's just rough math.
I I I I I always tell people when I talk on major X on this type of stuff, it's like. Imagine what our city is like with thirty million dollars less revenue overnight. And that's what's gonna happen when we go from one point five to one percent. And I don't know that we fully grasp that. Or if we grasp it and we just don't wanna deal with it yet because it's still five, six years in the future, but. Yeah, I think we I I struggle with what does our city look like with thirty million dollars when you let me sit here with the. Our assistant chief here.
Yeah.
What does what does our, you know, city look like with thirty million dollars less revenue?
Being on top of our monthly and our quarterly is one thing and our yearly is another thing. But a business, most businesses I know look at that three-year, five-year plan. We're there. We're at we're at that three, five-year plan where we need to start thinking about that. And I think the city council seeing that repetitively, repetitively. Coming from staff, specifically the financial department and from this committee, it is will help us drive home the the. Bellwether that is to be.
And and we do give the city council a ten-year outlook for the general fund every year, a couple of times a year, a lot of times. And um so they do see it, they see that drop off. Um but I completely appreciate getting it in this report too, cause you're right, repetition does not hurt. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on on this discussion. Um of course, I think it's important to notify uh and alert. City council to what this impending cliff is gonna be in a couple of years. I also think it's important to let our citizens in the city know that these measure X dollars are going to these projects. And the problem that that I think I have personally as a citizen, as a citizen here in Santa Ana is that. I don't necessarily see it, and that's through no fault of of the city, but just as a a regular resident of Santa Ana. I don't honestly know before joining this uh commission where those measure X dollars go.
Yeah.
And I think it's really important that our residents understand that what will happen in twenty twenty nine. And what will happen in twenty thirty nine.
Yeah, the um it to your point, I mean, the city could be doing a better job informing its residents what that money is being used for. Um because we have a very limited audience that's actually reading these kind of reports. And so. We we have been making a push of late to at least get physical signs out on construction projects. That are partially funded with measure X. So there there's actually a few of those around town now. So we've been making a push on that. And then um one of the things the uh mayor expressed some interest in us doing additional. Community outreach during this next budget process. And so uh we have a very detailed community engagement plan. That's going to council on Tuesday and um it includes us having a desire. So we're gonna see it through of making a video. And the video is going to really, you know, drill home what it what is everybody getting with measure X dollars. Um cause we it we it is so important. I'm not saying that the city is, you know, automatically gonna go out for some kind of renewal or anything like that. I I mean, there there's there's no current plans to do so. Um but at the same time, I think it's important for everybody to understand. So we're making, we're we're upping our efforts. Let's put it that way.
I I love that idea. Um basic question, but I'm still new to this. So I just want to make sure I understand the fifteen million dollar figure. For carryover projects, that means that money is already spoken for or allocated for projects that have yet to be completed. So it's not like there's a surplus of fifteen million. That money's already spoken for.
That that is correct. It's like, for example, we've issued a contract. It's just the matter of completing the project. So it's really just carrying over that budget to to be able to complete the project.
Yeah. Cause when I did see that figure initially, I got excited. I'm like, oh, there's an extra fifteen million in the pot. Oh, wait, never mind. It's already spoken for. Okay, thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Um well, I appreciate appreciate it. I think it's a, you know, re- repetitiveness, I think is it. Is key on this. Uh and I agree that, you know, our, you know, our residents need to understand it. Even though um. Yeah, it's 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 tough to understand, but uh it it it's gonna make the, I mean. All we have to do is look over our neighbors at Westminster and kind of some of the stuff that they're going through and um. You know, we don't wanna be in that fire drill of uh of doing that. So the more we can get ahead of it, the better. Um let's see, I think we are uh at the sunset of our, speaking of sunsets, the sunset of our meeting. Um so unless there's uh any more questions on on that item, I think we're uh. Well, let's see, if you guys have something to to say or give us a uh comments about something coming up in the future, now is the time.
Yeah, um last meeting at city council, um the city manager's office actually did bring forward a report to do the first step of getting stipends. Increased and then established for this committee. So they're on their way and I've asked for them to be retroactive to July first. So. I know it's not a lot of money, but um sooner or later you'll get a you'll get a catch-up payment. So it is on its way. The first step did ju- did go to city council last meeting.
So I think it has two more council meetings, if I remember right, to get approved. I I was I was confused on.
So no comments for me, but thank you for attending again our meetings. I think it's more personal when we're here in person than in Zoom. It's the first time I've seen somebody, so it's it's always good to say to do it in person.
Sorry, there is something that I wanted to bring up. Is now the time or?
Yes, absolutely. Now we're moving on to uh to our comments. So you go ahead and uh remember to uh.
Two, not two, but I'll go by two as well. Apologies again. I totally misheard you. I was so confused. So I I don't know if this is, well, anyway, I was approached by a neighbor in Ward five. I'm from Ward five and. Um I apparently they've been discussing uh the potential of a new park in in our ward with um our council member. And um there was a question though of of funding a feasibility study. And I did take a like, uh I did take a look at the language of measure X and it does mention maintaining parks. I don't know if that would fall under that category, um a feasibility study for a new park. Um technically, it's not maintaining an existing park, but it would potentially be a new future park. So I know that I I guess in March, this committee is tasked with making recommendations to city council. So I I I guess I'm, I don't know, I'm proposing that to this committee. Um is that something that we? Could discuss, I guess, in March or I I'm not sure how. Folks feel about that. Again, this was um somebody in in, you know, my ward, Ward five, who approached me and and raised this this issue.
I'm just curious, um the, do you know how much was quoted for the feasibility study? Was there any, was there any cost? Potential cost mentioned?
Um no, so it's very much in the preliminary stages.
Okay.
And so um. To answer your question, no. Uh to my knowledge, there was there was no cost that was mentioned.
And and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Downs, uh but even if it's not uh in exact language of the major X. Uh ballot major is for any general perp- the the is this is any general purpose. Funding. And so even even though you you're like, oh, do I squeeze it in this box? If it's general fund, it's major X. Is that correct?
Thank you. Um that's a very valid point. Yeah. Uh but I I definitely think that um parks are important in the city. We are a very densely populated city and there is a lack of green space here. And so um. Uh it's something that I think the people in my ward in particular are interested in. Um basically, maybe hopefully getting a new park or another park. Um so yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's something that we vote on in March or I. Or do I just pose it to the group now? I don't know.
First, that wasn't on your agenda, so you can't take any action. But you can actually, you know, just what you did was completely appropriate. Suggest it to your fellow committee members. Y'all can chew on it. When you come back in March and you actually take action on some recommendations, then you can, you know, potentially. Look at it at that time, but at least they're all aware now. And so you did your job.
Do I need to bring anything, I guess, eh when March rolls around or do I need to add anything?
I I have a note, so I will bring back information on that. I'll find out how much it is at least.
Great. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Wanna, I I forget where we were at. Okay, do we? Okay. So let's. Any any more comments?
No comments.
All right, Vice Chair Lugo.
I think I could talk all day about measure X money. But there's no comments or questions. Uh how can we help you, Director Downs, um with the business roundtable coming up? And first of all, I applaud what you and your team have done. This is a great meeting, very, very effective, very informative. Um and great job getting a video together to, you know, communicate out to the community what measure X dollar dollars are doing. But um how can this committee help you and your staff um moving forward? Anything stands out, please let us know.
Now, any anytime you're in the commit uh community, your your friends, your neighbors, anything like that, just just. Spread the good word. Um you know, let them know what the city's up to and how they can participate and how they can find out more. But there's so many resources on our website and everything else. I know it can be overwhelming, but if, you know. If you know exactly where to look and you guys all do. That that's helpful.
Thank you.
All right, great. Um so fe- fe- our our next meeting is March. Um at that meeting, we go uh primarily, we're going over our recommendations in anticipation of budget season, which. Will have already started, I think, at that point uh for for your group. Yeah. Um and then um so our kind of our ta- our next task at our at our next meeting will be to go over that annual. Uh annual report, I don't know if it's called an annual report, but uh you know, our feedback into council at that point. Um and uh. So I don't, uh I know that we brought in PD at this meeting. Uh I don't know if anyone wants to uh. Uh suggest maybe in the interim, bringing in anyone else for the next one. Obviously, there's a lot of questions. Uh from some someone in a purple shirt uh that makes things go really long on that, but uh um. So I, you know, I I I might rec- my, I think, you know, usually these that that uh. Uh developing those recommendations can be a little um can be time-consuming. Sometimes it's been, you know, dealt off to a committee, subcommittee. Uh but if anyone had want, has any strong desire to bring other um. Uh departments in, uh maybe what uh what what Director Downs uh know about that and she might be able to. Direct it or speak into uh maybe the next time it would be better um ti- type type situation too. So um but appreciate. The the hard work, nice to be in person. Um and I think uh number two, you might have something else that I I saw you on the trigger there, so.
Sorry, I I know it's been a long meeting. Uh would would it? Be beneficial, I guess, to ask someone from Parks and Rec to come and talk about? Or no?
I'll second that, actually. We haven't had a presentation in a while, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Uh.
I can invite them.
Okay.
Um just just a thought here. Um not that I like, you know, creating more work for us, but this is important stuff. So. Um you know, don't forget, you guys can call an additional meeting if you feel like you need it. And so um you know, that March meeting, it it can be, you know, to take one meeting to try to formulate your. Annual recommendations to city council. That could be a little overwhelming. And so um you know, if you want a a presentation. You know, cause that might help you with formulate some of your recommendations. Um you know, then then that might be warranted. So definitely consider that.
Um I I might maybe suggest that um. Just from a a cycle perspective, you know, we don't wanna necessarily, I don't think it'd be beneficial to have a uh presentation in March. Uh and then immediately that meeting may formulate. Um and so I and but at the same time, I don't, from a cycle perspective, I don't think it'd be beneficial necessarily to. Push the, you know, the formulation of the annual annual report to later, just because I feel like. With the the budget cycle, I felt like March, March was kind of where it needed to be. So.
It is.
So if we were to have uh uh and that's where I was kind of queuing up with, you know, another department. You know, maybe if we were to do a special February meeting and then we keep March. That way we're able to utilize the, you know, that that information from Parks and Rec. Into into the March meeting might be beneficial, which I think logistically, personally, you would. Maybe send out, hey, what's your availability on?
Well, I second that with a condition. If we're going to, and and I don't mind this, I like the idea of having a meeting prior to our March meeting. That would also would like to include public works into that, into that presentation.
So Public Works, Wreck and Park, special meeting in February. And uh we that that's what I'm hearing from a majority of the committee.
Unless anyone disagrees. I I like the idea of public works because they really are in charge of so many aspects of the day-to-day. You know, uh operations of how the city truly functions.
But for the record, I was not trying to create another meeting for us all, but I do think it's a good idea. Um and uh to the chair's point, I think that's probably wise not to have these presentations. At the same meeting that we plan on formulating our recommendations to city council, so.
And you all received that um the additional information on the um. The the crossing guard and quality of life team expenditures. Okay, good. Um and then just to give you a little preview, a little heads up, the um. One of the things that we're looking at for this budget process, I don't know if we're gonna do it or not, but uh we may be centralizing. Our um homeless efforts into a single budget presentation. Um so just to maybe, we'll see, where that's something that we're kicking around right now. So just a little preview.
I'm I'm sorry. Uh could we select a date for the February meeting? I only ask because I will be out out of town the the second week of February. I would like to be present for the meeting. Okay.
Okay.
So maybe maybe if you wanna give anyone they're not available.
Sure. Do you want me to email you or just tell you now? Okay, I will email you.
Okay. That's good.
Thank you.
I'm going to taxi soon, so I'll be available. But I I just like to point out that February fourteenth would be our normal cycle. Uh but that sounds like that may not be the best and it's also Valentine's Day, which maybe it matters to some people. Um but uh.
Yes, I will. I will be in Montana.
Honey, I I have to go to a city meeting.
Right. Uh so um but so let's let's uh maybe coordinate and obviously we can't coordinate amongst ourselves. And so you're coordinating through Kristen. And obviously with, you have to coordinate with Parks and Rec and oh, I mean, there's, you have some coordination for sure in there, so. Right, yeah.
Good luck. Good luck.
So. All right, well, um thank you very much. I think that was very productive and this is a long one. Um but the information also, unless anyone else has anything. Else, which doesn't look like it, um we'll go ahead and conclude this uh meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.